Welcome to the June 15th Troy City Council Meeting, which is called Order. We request that if you have a cellphone, electronic device, that you turn it off at this time. And this evening, we are pleased to have with us Pastor Cliff Lambert from Woodside Bible Church, who will give us our invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your tremendous blessing that you've given to us as a city and as a nation. And I thank you for the integrity of this council and their leadership, and I pray, Father, that you would continue to provide them with your wisdom and guidance and direction as we make plans for the future. Father, be with this meeting now. May you guide and direct all the things that will take place, and we ask these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Could we have the roll call, Mrs. Fred Ollman?
Mayor Schilling.
Here.
Councilor Bell Tramini.
Here.
Brumfield.
Here.
Eisenbacher.
Here.
Fleming.
Powerlet.
Kerwin.
Here.
Corn President. This evening, we begin our meeting on a very happy note, and we have a presentation that I'll step down to the front to give on behalf of the council. Now, we have a wonderful couple come forward. This is for Fred and Muriel Rounds. Right up here with me, I won't stand between you, not after this many years. This is on the occasion of recognizing Fred and Muriel Rounds on the occasion of their 50th wedding anniversary. Whereas Fred and Muriel Waltz Rounds were united in marriage on June 6, 1959, in Detroit after meeting at the Young Twenties Group at Bushnell Congregational Church, and are now celebrating their 50th wedding anniversary surrounded by friends and family. And whereas this marriage has been blessed with two sons, Richard Grafton and David Ernest, who received from their parents the kind of loving and happy life that develops good citizens and worthy adults. And whereas son Richard and daughter-in-law Dawn reside in Chicago, Illinois, with their daughter Caitlin, and son David and daughter-in-law Jenny reside in Portland, Oregon. And whereas Fred worked as a chemical engineer at GM, and Muriel served as the executive director of the Oakland branch of the YMCA from 1952 to 1959. And whereas in 1960, Fred and Muriel moved to Troy and purchased the third house ever constructed in Glenmore Estates. Whereas in addition to providing for their family, a legacy of wit, wisdom, and love throughout the years, Fred and Muriel devoted quality, time, and energy to the Troy Historical Society for 30 years, including volunteering as instructors for the education programs at the Troy Historical Museum. Fred also has served as treasurer of the Troy Historical Society and a member of the Troy Heritage Campaign Committee, and Muriel has served as a member of the Historical Commission and Historic District Commission. And whereas Fred and Muriel are outstanding examples of incredible volunteers, providing consistent generous support, creative ideas, dedication, and hard work to the Troy community. Now therefore be resolved that Fred and Muriel Rounds are worthy of this expression of our sincere congratulations on this happy occasion of their 50th wedding anniversary, and be it further resolved that the Troy City Council and all Troy residents extend best wishes to Fred and Muriel for many more years of good health and happiness together. And we're presenting it this 15th day of June, signed by myself and all members of council. And as, now our house was nearly the third house in Glenmore. I live in Glenmore, too. And our son John and Rich are friends and have known each other for many years. If we could, we have so many people in Troy that volunteer and do things, but it's not always the couple that volunteers and does things together. And for 30 years, that's quite an accomplishment, and 50 years of wedding anniversary, and we know we're going to have many more years together. My granddaughter is just doing fine. I know, she's wonderful. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We have been privileged to live 49 years in this great city and knowing lots of wonderful people who deserve a plaque as much as we do, because I'm sure there are many, many more who have been here maybe possibly longer than we have and have given a lot of volunteer work to this city. And we are especially privileged to be working with Lorraine Campbell at the museum and grounds and the Troy Historical Society. Many people have gone on before us, and we are glad that we can help pass on some of the history of Troy for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wonderful. Well, that concludes what I have to do, but now is it Mrs. Stewart that's going to make a presentation? I believe so. Some more giving. You know, we really do have a wonderful history of volunteerism in this community, and we should be proud of it. And we encourage young people to get involved, too.
And our employees give all the time as well, and I'm here with Chris's nanny, come up? As you all know probably by now, we do Fridays and maybe some other special days that we collect money for Casual for a Cause, and our March and April were for Autism Speaks, and they use funding for research into finding a cure and therapy for autistic children. So it's my pleasure to give you a check for $1,163.
I would just like to say, on behalf of my former supervisor, Vicki Richardson, thank you very much for whom none of this would have been possible. And for my son Hugh, I love you very much, babe.
Thank you.
I just want to say a thank you on behalf of our organization, but I also want to make mention of something that's pretty important to me, and that is the city of Troy. I grew up in Windsor, and often from the Michigan News, we used to hear Mayor Coleman Young come on the radio or the television, and quite often he would say, "I'm the mayor of the city of Troy," because he wasn't very articulate with that D-E and the T. And I thought for the longest time, "He was your mayor," and I used to pray for good wishes to this town because he'd had nothing but bad news to bring on a regular basis. Took me a while to realize he was from Detroit. The other interesting thing or ironic thing about the city of Troy is that in the town that I grew up, or that I presently have a home in, in Blenheim, Ontario, just down the road, literally five miles down the road, and if you come in from all four corners of that little town, you'll see the sign that says Troy, D-R-O-Y. It's a hamlet of about 50 people, and I don't know whether Helen had the good graces to recognize two great little villages, well, you're a very big city and our little village, but the name has had resonance with me for a fair length of time. So too, as Autism Speaks, I've been involved with them now for almost a year, and we've done some terrific, terrific work, and I want to thank the employees, staff, members, individuals who helped contribute to this cause. And just a bit of statistical lore, we've raised almost a million dollars in the state of Michigan from some of those good volunteers, a lot of them families and friends of people who are connected with children affected by autism. And we've also returned to the state of Michigan in those research dollars to Oakland University, Michigan State University, Madonna University, a little over a million dollars. So I guess Autism Speaks is doing their part to keep the employment opportunities as well as the research drive alive here in the state of Michigan. So I want to thank the city of Troy employees again for this very generous gift. Thank you kindly.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're going to have a presentation by a group.
I get tired.
Our Community Affairs Director Cindy Stewart, our Police Chief Gary Mayer, and the, and are we going to also have some, Chuck Racer going to do the fire part of it? No? The chief?
Nope.
And thank you.
One chief and I.
And this is the Police and Fire Benevolent Association and Race for the Badge, correct? Thank you.
We're doing a co-presentation.
Yes.
A lot of people aren't aware of the Troy Police and Fire Benevolent Association. So during 2001, we felt the impact of 9/11, but then we also suffered the loss of Police Officer Charles Malvahill and firefighter Jim Rupke, who passed away both in the line of duty. So the desire to help families of public safety employees brought into focus the need to organize a benevolent association. And our former chief Kraft, he had talked with the Farmington Hills Police Chief, who had a very large benevolent association, so they kind of gave us some hints on how to do ours. But the Troy Police and Fire Benevolent Association is a nonprofit organization, and it was established by Troy police officers, firefighters, city employees, community volunteers, and concerned citizens to provide assistance to people in need, including families of public safety employees experiencing financial distress or personal tragedy. And through private donations and through various fundraising events since 2001, we have had dinner dances, entertainment book sales, an annual Troy Police versus the Detroit Red Wings Alumni Hockey Game, we have raised more than $210,000. This year, as many of you know, we did not do the hockey game, so we had some police personnel, some officers, that were trying to figure out another event that we could do to raise some money. So, and that's where Gary's going to come in to talk to you about the first annual Race for the Badge. But of the money we have raised, more than $80,000 has been donated since we have formed in 2002. During 2008, and I have for you copies of our annual reports that we did for '06, '07, and '08, but we gave $6,000 to individuals within Troy just in 2008 alone in southeast Michigan. According to what we have passed, a resolution, we automatically donate $500 to any family of a police officer or firefighter killed in the line of duty in Oakland, Wayne, or Macomb Counties. We've also helped people with life-threatening illnesses, people and employees who've lost their homes due to fire. We've helped pay funeral expenses for employees' children, children's funerals. Other donation requests, our board reviews them, and the board does have police, fire, and employee personnel and citizens. Other donation requests, right, we review those, and that's why we're going to hand these out to you. So the new fundraiser this year is the first annual is Race for the Badge, and Gary's going to go ahead and tell you a little bit about that one.
Thanks, Cindy. What we wanted to do is just give you a brief overview of the first annual Race for the Badge. This was the brainchild of Police Officer Teresa Harrison and Police Officer Candace Rushton. They did the bulk of the work on it. They put the strong arm on a lot of people and got a lot of volunteers also, as you'll see as I go through the presentation. As you can see, we had 184 runners and walkers. We had several law enforcement agencies participating, many of them are from the metro area. We had five events. The two challenging events were the 10-kilometer run and the 5-kilometer run. They gave out awards in all the different age groups for those two runs. The walks were all family walks, and those are more for fun events to get people out there. It was held to benefit the Police and Fire Benevolent Association, as Cindy has articulated, and money went directly to the family of Officer Mason Samborski. The Oak Park Public Safety Officer was killed in late 2008, killed in the line of duty. Fifty percent of the participants were from the city of Troy. The other three counties in tri-county area were very well represented. We had officers, or young people who wanted to become police officers, from the two police academies in the area show up to run to impress us, to attempt to get jobs with us. Forty-four of the participants were directly related to the Troy Police Department or city staff. This is a list on the left of officers who adjusted their schedule so that we could provide some of the law enforcement services that needed to be done, notably the traffic direction and that, we had to have on-duty personnel doing that. And on the other side is a partial list, pretty sure we got everybody of the police department volunteers. Our gold sponsor, the major sponsor, was Suburban Collection Car Dealerships. They were very, very kind to us. We have a couple photographs showing people running through the neighborhoods, running on Big Beaver roadway. The proceeds to the race is stated there $6,600. Three other groups volunteered. We should recognize the Troy Fire Department, very, very helpful with us, the Troy Police Explorers, and the Oakland County Sheriff's Explorers. This is the end of my part of the presentation, as shown by two of our officers crossing the finish line there. There's nobody else around, I'm not sure if they were the first group coming through or the last one. From their side, they were the first two. Thank you.
And I'm sure you've all heard about the Madison Heights Police Officer that just passed away. We did send a check to his family Friday for them as part of what we do. So we're always accepting donations, and the money just goes back. We all do this voluntarily, those of us on the board, and it's, we felt that it's been a very important addition to the city of Troy to have this benevolent association.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That concludes the presentations, and so we'll go now to regular business. And our first item is a public hearing, and it is a preliminary development plan approval, BBK Mixed Use Project on the northeast corner of Big Beaver and Kilmar in Section 22, currently zoned, PUD 10. And staff will present before we open the public hearing. How are you this evening, Fred?
I'm great, thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. How are you?
Thank you.
As you indicated, Madam Mayor, before you this evening is an application for preliminary development plan approval for BBK Mixed Use Project, which is a very, very brief summary, is approximately two and a half acres in size, and they propose 14 residential units and approximately 19,000 square feet of retail. I thought it would be somewhat helpful to very, very briefly go over the PUD approval process to kind of catch up council as well as the audience on where exactly we are in this process. There's three steps to the PUD application process. The first step is concept development plan approval. And when the city council approves a concept development plan, they actually are doing four things. They're approving the concept development plan, they're rezoning the property to PUD, they're approving the PUD agreement, and they're authorizing the petitioner to go forward with an application for step two. And I would note that city council approved the concept development plan on December 15, 2008, which is exactly six months to the day from today. The second step is preliminary development plan approval. Essentially, it's preliminary site plan approval. The applicant is required to submit a complete preliminary development plan application, and the staff and planning commission review it to ensure that it's consistent with the concept development plan, and they've done that. The third step is final approval, which involves the approval of engineering drawings, and this is, this stage is administrative. Planning Department actually is a final sign-off on that. Once they get final approval, they can submit building, submit for building permits and ultimately begin construction of the project. But the petitioner is before you this evening, as you indicated, for preliminary development plan approval. The planning commission considered this item at two public hearings, and they recommended approval of the preliminary development plan. And as you know, we, the planning department utilizes the firm of Carlisle-Wortman Associates to assist in the PUD negotiation process, and they prepared a report summarizing this application. And Richard Carlisle from Carlisle-Wortman is here this evening, and I'd like to present him so he can summarize his report. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council, and it has been a beautiful day. As Mr. Savadant did indicate, we are in the second phase of the PUD project approval process. The project that you see before you tonight is substantially, if almost not identically the same, as the concept development plan that you saw. This project was actually submitted with more detail at the concept stage than what is actually required, which is helpful. And obviously, when we reviewed the preliminary plan, we reviewed it against the concept development plan, but in essence, there was very little detail that needed to be added to the second set of plans. The project, as was presented, a concept development plan, is a mixed-use project. You probably get tired of hearing me say that coming before you, but that, again, of course, has been something that we've been pursuing at your direction, and of course, something that's encouraged by the Plan Unit Development provisions of the ordinance. And of course, it's the kind of development that we've been attempting to try to encourage and attract along Big Beaver for a number of different reasons, not the least of which the sustainability of that type of development and the attractiveness of it from that standpoint. The project does include a mix of retail space that are in three buildings, and there are 14 residential developments. The PUD option does, of course, allow for a mix of uses and a higher density of a residential component. However, in return, we expect things such as walkable design, we expect excellence in architecture and landscaping, we expect there being paid some attention to green building techniques and creative stormwater management. And we do expect that a project be integrated with and compatible with the surrounding uses, and in this case, I believe that has been achieved. I think Mr. Savadant did indicate that it is a two-and-a-half acre site, was occupied by a vacant duplex. And one of the things I want to clear up was, the, there was really no difference. As you might have seen in my report, our May, or excuse me, March 5th report, we did raise a question about the building, excuse me, the square footage. Turns out that that was a typographical error, and that was resolved at the planning commission level, and so consequently, we did indicate that the project did meet with our recommendation for approval. The, as I said, I think one of the things that we concentrated on with this project was trying to, again, create a walkable design and to create this central plaza that connected through the retail into the residential portion and to incorporate some green design in the project, which our staff, Zach Branigan, who is lead accredited professional, did verify that they are using a number of green design measures. And so consequently, it is our recommendation to you that the preliminary plan be approved. All the items, as indicated in your resolution, that were items that needed to be addressed, have been addressed to the satisfaction of the planning commission, staff, and our office, and consequently, I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Carlisle? Based on the information we've received, Councilor Kerwin?
One of the concerns was landscape, and I noticed that in our, would you like to address that in our packet?
Yes, I'll be happy to. The project actually, after it received an approval of concept plan, actually, what happened subsequently was there was some further communication between the applicant and the neighbors regarding the screening, and I think what came out of it was very positive in terms of a screening plan along that northerly property line that really satisfied everyone's concerns. They did need to come back and amend the plan before the planning commission, and they did do that. But I think it turned out to be a positive because it seemed that it satisfied the concerns of the neighboring residents. And again, that's where I was indicating that I felt that this applicant's done an excellent job of trying to fit in with the neighborhood and work with the neighbors and to develop a design that was really compatible with the neighboring land uses. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Any others? Thank you, Mr. Carlisle.
Okay.
Is there anything else from staff before we open the public hearing? If not, we'll open the public hearing. Are the petitioners present? Do they wish to make additional comment? I thought I saw you all there, but didn't know if you wanted to add something more and answer questions, of course. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Ryan Marsh with Landis Development, one of the petitioners. We are here tonight to answer any additional questions. I think Mr. Carlisle and Mr. Savadant have summarized our project in general, and if you do have any specific questions for us as the petitioner, we are here tonight to answer those questions.
Councilor Kerwin has a question? Yes.
I'm so pleased that you are going to attempt for LEED certification. I know that there's a number of elements that go into it, but it's wonderful to see the design aspects, to see the sustainable and low-impact pieces that you're trying to put in, and I would encourage you strongly to go ahead and do that as a demonstration of not only good design, but what can happen for other developers to use. Secondly, in both reports, we saw your ability to work carefully with the neighbors, and we appreciate your working to address their concerns and yet to have a green answer to many of their concerns, so that's good for all of us.
Great, thank you.
Does anyone else have a question? I had one, then, as in regarding the six on-street parking spaces on Kilmar Drive. Would you talk a little bit more about that? I remember when you came here with the original concept plan, and I believe it was Councilor Brumfield that brought up the idea of not having parking on that street because of the concerns of the neighborhood. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. When, the last time we were here, it was debated whether or not those six parking spaces should be along Kilmar. The main concern was the neighbors directly to the west were concerned about turnaround traffic in their driveways. Subsequent to our, the last city council meeting, we have met with those neighbors, discussed the on-street parking and how we could mitigate any potential traffic problems. Some of the remedies were enforcing our condo document agreements to make sure that it's not, you know, applicable to be able to do that if you're one of the owners of the condo units. And then also clarifying that those six on-street parking spaces are in the right-of-way, they aren't actually encroaching into the existing street, but actually going into what is now green space to carve out and create those six spaces. So there, we are creating a bit more width, and at the end of the day, most of the neighbors were relieved of the concerns, and we were able to agree and move forward that the six spaces were good for the planning of the site and allowing six additional spaces for the residents of the proposed condos to use.
Okay. And with the change in the economic conditions, has there been a change in the restaurants that you wanted to have in at the proposal?
Not really. We haven't, we haven't changed our, the type of tenants that we're pursuing. There's, there's no doubt a slowing in the economy and a slowing of interest currently and over the past six months, but it's a, it's an epoch in time, and I think it's, it's not necessary to rush into attracting or going after tenants that we're not prepared to put into the project. We are spending considerable, we are making a considerable investment into the We are spending considerable, we are making a considerable investment into the type of building that we're building. As you can see from some of the green elements, the unique architecture, the unique site planning, some of the different site attributes. So, you know, we do need to attract the right tenants and create the right mix to make the project work the way we want it to.
Okay, thank you. Council, do you have any other questions? Thank you. We'll see if there's anyone else. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item that's here this evening? Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward and give us your name?
My name is Kevin Douglas. I live at 3131 Kilmore Drive, which is just north, right at Lancaster that comes over. I was not able to be present at the last meeting, I was out of town traveling. So as far as one of our biggest concerns that we had the previous meeting was those six on-site parking spaces right in front of Kilmer. Doing my yard this evening, just looking down there, knowing that that is a large concern for us. I have a nice wide, double-wide driveway, nice and deep, right past Lancaster, which is a perfect spot for turnaround traffic. And I have no doubt in my mind that can, those tenants, whether they're guests or the people living in those condos, will be using that as a turnaround. We all know that you can put that in the bylaws of the condo association. Who knows that every single minute of every day that they can't do that? Anybody that's going to save five minutes so they don't have to go all the way down Heartland and turn Heartland into a half a mile road, there's no sidewalks in this, in this neighborhood, therefore, there are a lot of children on the street, and walking on the street just would add more traffic to that neighborhood. I think by also adding those, you're taking away from a green space from those condominiums. If those people living in those condominiums do have children, that's another green spot that they can play right in front of their house and not have to go somewhere else. I think by alleviating those spaces, you leave it to more of a neighborhood-type atmosphere. It's not a downtown Royal Oak townhouse, townhouse community. It's a very nice neighborhood. Again, we do not have sidewalks, so most everybody is on that street. That is, one of my concerns is a parent of a six-year-old daughter who loves to play in her driveway. And yeah, I can't have my eyes on her every second, but all it takes is two seconds for someone to whip in and not see someone playing in that driveway. The same thing with Lancaster. That's a dead-end street, someone can very well just turn in right in there. The two neighbors that live right on the corners, their grandchildren go back and forth from that house on their toys and their bikes. Someone wheeling in would not even see them either. If you look at that entire neighborhood down that east side of Kilmer, there are no parking signs all the way north of Heartland. When that builder built those six houses right there on Lancaster, they removed those no-parking signs. They never put them back up. Technically, there is no parking on the east side of Kilmer. So again, as a, as a resident of Troy, a new resident and love my neighborhood, I want as least traffic as possible on that road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
I'd like to have a comment.
Yes, and I'll call Mr. Savage. He had his hand up just before you, Mr. Reinhardt. I'll call him both. Mr. Savage?
I did think I had the computer. It's not there?
The computer?
Yeah. To speak on this issue?
I didn't see any names here, it just says test user, so.
I missed it again.
But that's okay. You know, before we had that, we always used to just say whoever raised their hand, so you were fine.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. In recent years, I'm thinking at least three mixed-use projects in the area have been abandoned, two of them on Big Beaver. There was the Monarch Project, and then there was a project at Big Beaver and John R., where the CVS stands. That, as far as I can see, is abandoned. And another one, I believe, was at Dequinda and Square Lake area. Now, the City of Troy spent an awful lot of time, particularly on the Monarch building, because I was here on that project, and like meeting after meeting, and this went on and on and on, and I know the city administration put an awful lot of time into this. So I wondered, was there any reimbursement to the city for that lost time? And also, in that respect, will there be any reimbursement for lost time and money that the city has spent if this project fails? Thank you.
And Mr. Reinhardt, did you wish to speak on this item?
Yes, thank you. I didn't sign up, but I didn't know this was here. My, my thing is this, the whole thing is over six parking spots on 16 Mile, the jewel of Troy, the 16 Mile corridor. And I figure somehow, with Patterson's help, with mass transit, and cars are getting smaller, that these six spaces might not be needed in the future. And to stop a project, the man using his own money, is ridiculous, okay? He's not asking for city money, he's using his own money, he's bending over backwards, and for 60 feet of parking on a street that nobody wants parking on, you guys are fighting over it. That's amazing. I'll be packing in the public comments, but that's amazing.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing, return the item to the council table, and I should clarify, one matter is that when projects are brought forward, the developers have to pay a fee, and go, and they go through the process and everything, which does cover costs that are incurred with the, with projects. So when a project then doesn't go forward, they don't get that money back, so they've already paid that fee for the time where projects were approved. If administration wants to jump in with anything more, I'd be happy to call on them, but I thought I'd clarify that for folks. Councilmembers, do you have questions you want to ask before doing the resolution? No? Councilwoman Beltramini, I think signaled, and then Councilwoman Brumfield?
Madam Mayor, while I understand the concern over the six parking places, I believe the road is wide enough for a sufficient turnaround, and if there's problems, then we can have some later enforcement action. And therefore, I would move the preliminary development plan approval for BBK mixed-use development on the northeast corner of Big Beaver and Kilmer in Section 22, currently Zone PUD 10, as written in tonight's agenda.
Support. Moved by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman Eisenbacher, that we approve the resolution as printed and presented this evening. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
I do want to echo the one point that these parallel parking spots are off the road, and it's a 50-foot wide road. If you're starting from the spot and you want to go in the opposite direction, it's a lot easier just to make a U-turn exiting your spot and then heading southbound right back to Big Beaver. So although the concern is valid, I don't believe many vehicles will take advantage of it.
Okay. Further comments or questions? The vote then, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck. Our next item is zoning ordinance text amendment, ZODA 238, Article 28, the social services facilities in M1. And Mr. Zadat will present for staff. Thank you.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. This zoning ordinance text amendment was initiated by a discussion that city management had with an individual who was interested in utilizing a vacant light industrial building for a social service facility. They are not, social service facilities are not permitted currently in M1. So what the planning department did was move this item forward to the planning commission for informal discussion, and they felt it was a good idea to amend the ordinance to permit these types of uses in M1. So we presented the planning commission with a draft zoning ordinance text amendment. They held a public hearing on the, on the amendment on April 28th, 2009, and recommended approval. What the amendment does is it permits social service facilities in M1 subject to special use approval, provided that overnight stay is not permitted in the social service facility. And we also define a social service facility, and I'll read the definition. It's a facility operated by an organization which provides products and services for individuals, and I stress the word "individuals," including but not limited to training, counseling, health, or the distribution of food or clothing. Now, the initial amendment that was before council, two weeks ago, for the announcement of public hearing, did not use the word "individuals," actually used the word "citizens." And one of the city council members brought forward the, an issue with the word "citizens" and suggested replacing "citizens" with the word "individuals," which I think is a very appropriate amendment. So that, that amendment was made, and city council, excuse me, city management recommends approval of the, of the proposed text amendment. It, it's going to improve the marketability and the potential reuse of light industrial properties in the city of Troy. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
And we've had one request for this, but we foresee that there may be others because since it's permitted then, that might be an area where they can use existing buildings.
Yeah, we, I think there's some potential here for this, these types of uses to be, for someone to seek these types of uses in light industrial. There's been an effort that's made by the planning commission, and obviously, the city council's been on board, to expand the range of uses in M1. Some of the things that, some of the uses that we've recently amended the ordinance to accommodate include commercial, indoor commercial recreation and restaurants, just to name two. This is consistent with those, with those past amendments.
Did you have any concerns from people that are in M1 presently about changing some of the uses in M1?
You mean, other than, other than, yeah, we've, there's been some discussion, and we're, as you're aware, we're undergoing a comprehensive rewrite of the zoning ordinance. We've looked generally at the M1 district, but what's going to happen, I believe, is the range of uses in M1 is going to be greatly expanded to, to address the issue of all the vacant light industrial buildings we have currently in Troy.
Okay. Other questions? No? Councilwoman Kerwin?
Where is Alliance Mobile Health currently located? In which zoning?
Alliance Mobile Health, the ambulance service? I believe the M1 was amended to permit Alliance Mobile Health, that type of service in M1.
And Troy People Concerned is housed within Alliance Mobile Health, and seems to be working out very, very well. It's a good expanded use, it's worked well for both. I'll be supporting this, I'm very glad to see that. The Euclidean zoning worked well for us back then. The masterland use plan is looking forward, and I think the flexibility with M1, taking a special use, carefully thought out by the planning commission, is really serving well. So delighted by this, and we'll be supporting the resolution.
Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
Yes, I'm also, I also appreciate the efforts by the city staff and by our planning commission to move this forward. Anytime there's a use that is maybe not as traditional as manufacturing, I would, and it's not a negative impact on the industrial neighborhood, I would hope that we could move this forward and do as much as we can to fill these, fill these vacant buildings and make them more prosperous again.
And with having it come under a special use approval, we have more control over what can actually occur and then just have it be open.
Correct.
And my question about asking if there was other concerns, if some of the people that were abutting neighbors, but still within M1, had any concerns about other uses other than what they're used to, and apparently, there isn't, or you would have heard.
There was, we had a public hearing at planning commission, we discussed it at a number of meetings, and we had no negative feedback.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Open the public hearing. Is there anyone here on this item? Sing none, and I'll close the public hearing, and then turn it to the table.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
We need to have a slight change to the recommended resolution because of the change to the, to the language, to be more inclusive.
What?
Curious if the clerk?
It's here. It's corrected on the table.
It is, it's in the yellow on the table?
It's corrected on the table.
Yes, but the resolution is separate from the ordinance, and the resolution references as recommended by the planning commission, and we changed one word from the planning commission recommendation. So we need to
Mrs. Blom?
Do a very small fix.
Yes, Mayor, you could add as recommended by the planning commission with one, with the change as presented on the table.
Okay. If there's no discussion, I'd like to move it. Resolve that the Troy City Council hereby amends Article 28, M1 Light Industrial District of the City of Troy zoning ordinance pertaining to permitting social service agencies in the M1 district, subject to special use approval, to read as written in the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment, ZODA 238. City Council public hearing draft as recommended by the planning commission with the changes as laid on the table this evening.
Support. Moved by Councilwoman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramini, that we approve the resolution as read with the change appearing in Section 4.20, Point 131A, changing the word "citizens" to "individuals." Yes, Councilwoman Beltramini?
I want to commend staff, because we've been looking at additional different uses for M1 for over 10 years. And, and one of the problems with additional uses in M1 is the parking, because we require so little parking for M1, and we expect so much parking for almost everything else. But these kinds of things are absolutely ideal for some of those large empty structures, and I would charge everybody to put your thinking caps on, because there are lots of needs in this community, and there are lots of empty buildings, and if we have people that don't all have to drive themselves, this might be a great place for those kinds of services, so thanks bunches.
Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote, please.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. There are no postponed items, so we'll go to public comment. And I don't know whether the kiosk is not working or not, but we'll take hands. And I know Marv, Reinhardt already said he wanted to speak, so Marv, I'll call on you first, would you like to come forward? This is on items that are not on the agenda?
Oh, don't worry.
I know, I know, you know.
There's so much out there I could talk about, but the biggest one is, I was talking to the city people about this tall grass, and they say citizens can't cut it, only the union can. So I guess you don't need no volunteers for that. Then also, too, little things in the city add up, and I guess it's perfectly all right to throw your cigarette butts out in front of any city office, because that's what you got out there. And in New York, they start fining those people, and some of our local citizens don't have to be taxed to have the people pick up those cigarette things, okay? Because employees pick it up, and then we pay for it. They're not on the ground, they can do other things. Because apparently, nobody has any right, nobody, you just trash this city, okay? Also, the DDA on their thing says 16 Mile is the Golden Mile. Wrong. It's Beach Road, okay? I don't know where these guys come from, big years, 49 years, but Beach Road is where the Golden Mile is, okay? And if you look at those, a lot of those houses are bought by foundations, so they don't change their tax base, okay? So I know where they are. And then when I mentioned Crooks and Troy Chamber, I'm not talking to individuals, it's the mass what they did, is because today I went over to Birmingham for their free thing, cost you $5, no public parking in the area, guy asked for $5, gave him $10. I'm from Troy, we don't worry about money in Troy, we got lots of it. The Troy Chamber has a million-dollar junk bucket out by our Troy Community Center rent-free. How can we not charge them with junk? If I had a car on there, these guys would tow it off, but they got a trailer that's junk, million dollars, and I bet you the Chamber could find- junk, million dollars, and I bet you the Chamber could finance half the stuff they're crying about, because now they got a railroad district over there, Target on all these places, four different city districts over that area, so that means there's four fire departments, four police departments. When the guy says he needs policemen, who are they going to call? Three little boxes up there, depending what part of the district it is? They said they're going to work the deal out. Hey, I finally saw Doug Smith, he came out of his rabbit hole, you know, I've been calling him for a long time, whoever he is. And then somebody stood up to all the architects and says, "Don't worry about the zoning, whatever is zoned, we can change it, so you guys can put anything you want over there." And then you're hassling this guy, he's using his own money, these guys are using my tax money. Because I told him, until you get a big berm out in front of Oakland Airport, a plane could go right into Target area. Nobody cares about that. Patterson must be smoking something again, he promised us Wi-Fi. Now I think he's trying to confuse the Jackson Railroad Airport thing with the Oakland Airport Transit Center. You know, I think he's getting a little bit senile, okay? And then, oh yeah, as far as that herb market, I lived on the end of the street there in that Shaq Cade Cod House, nonconforming, cost my dad a fortune to build it there. You know, just pay the fine, build it anyway. That's what we used to do in Troy. And I'm glad we're a sanctuary city now, like I said, I'll put that out on the blog, because we don't, citizens and individuals are the same. And it probably would increase our population in this city, because people need sanctuary cities somehow. So you people have a good day, I'll see you in two weeks. But I am going to more your meetings.
And is there anyone else that is here to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Yes, sir, come forward, please, and give us your name.
Mayor Schilling? Counsel, my name is Mark Delgan, I'm here on behalf of, um, excuse me, Coleman's Towing Recovery, Coleman's Towing and Recovery.
What was your last name, please?
Delgan, D-E-L-D-I-N.
Thank you.
Our contract with the city is up for renewal coming up, the city has decided not to extend the contract. I spoke with the police department and the purchasing department, and they said it's nothing wrong with Coleman's, it's just we're going to add some more specifications. And I just wanted to come here to tell the council, the mayor, and the city that whatever the classifications are, Coleman's is prepared to meet it and to exceed it. We toll at the pleasure of the city, and we recognize that we've been tolling for many, many, many years. And we proudly serve the city. And that's all I have. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that's here on an item that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, then we'll go to our regular business. And is there anyone that is here on a regular business item? There's no one that signed up, but I don't know if he has or working. Pardon?
E3 James Savage.
Pardon?
E3 James Savage.
Yes, all right. E3, you have it, but I didn't transfer over here. I know. So we'll go to E3 and call on Mr. Savage. That is, Mr. Savage, you signed up for the MDOT resolution for Big Beaver I-75 interchange enhancements?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. We always take items that people sign up for before we go to the others.
Yeah, I don't have all the details, of course, only more or less what I read in the agenda. And from what I can make out, the city plans to enhance the I-75 Big Beaver area at the city expense, I'm assuming that's the area just west of the freeway on the northwest corner. And then it reads that MDOT plans to reconstruct that area at a later date, which will require the removal of the enhancement by the city at the city's expense. And this seems to be, to me, a waste of money, and it seems to support the opinion that the object of government is to spend taxpayer money. And then to add to the equation is the fact that we are planning on spending something like $100 million on a mass transit center. So why do we need to widen I-75? We're putting all this money into moving traffic, and what I understand, the population of Michigan is declining, so we're going to be providing all these facilities and services that I don't see any demand for, unless, I'm wondering if the county of Oakland plans on maybe bringing in a few million immigrants to fill the state up? Because otherwise, we're going to be building the stuff that there's no demand for. And right now, I-75, I can travel right down to Detroit and it left us no accidents, in fact, all through I-75 without accidents, there's no holdups. And there's not enough traffic, the amount of traffic has slowed down. And I thought we went through this Oakland County I-75 widening like about 10 years ago, and it didn't go anywhere, there was no support for it from anybody. So are we bringing this up to, do these things never die? You know, we went through this, Mr., what was his name, Carradino? I thought he had quit in the end, but it seems like he never gave up. We don't need it, we don't need I-75 widening through this, and if we can enhance that area, which would be nice, not with the idea that MDOT is going to force us to tear it up again. So no thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Is there anyone else that's here on that item? Mr. Zerlik, may I call on Mr. Murphy with regard to this item? Because I was going to ask about that also.
Of course.
And Mr. Murphy, would you like to enlighten us about that provision that's in the resolution?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Actually, it does have everything to do with MDOT's plans to widen I-75, if and when that day ever comes. The idea of securing funds for that project is very, very far off, and so it's somewhat questionable if indeed I-75 would ever get widened. The plans that they have developed, though, do call for the quote-unquote widening actually to go inward, not outward. So realistically, they are just looking at the empty lawn strip that is between the northbound and the southbound lanes, and when it comes to Big Beaver Road, there's a gap in the bridge that's there now, and that would be the one area that they'd be looking at, is reconfiguring and putting a gap in the bridge. So as they were taking a look at our plans, we need to get their permission in order to make the improvements that we want to make, they saw that, well, that if and when they reach a point that they want to fill in that gap, if we have anything that we've done that they think needs to be removed so that it can be protected, or for whatever other various reasons, they just want to make sure that we agree that it would have to come out.
Are these the enhancement to the bridge itself?
The area that MDOT is talking about is for the bridge itself. They're keeping it open in case they have to change any configurations to the geometrics, but we don't expect that they will, they don't show any changes in the geometrics in any of their studies either. So the landscape improvements, the sidewalk improvements, and the safety improvements underneath the bridge that we want to do, I feel very confident are going to be able to stay.
Okay.
But it is something that MDOT has requested of us, this resolution, before we can go forward with the project.
Well, unless MDOT gets a great influx of money, I don't see where they're going to find the money to widen I-75 for quite a few years. Councilwoman Beltramey?
Question for Mr. Murphy, if I might. What is the primary source of funding for improvements to interstate? Is it federal highway matching dollars?
For MDOT, most of their money is federal highway matching dollars, and you're right, they just turned back $750 million because they couldn't make the local, the state match.
Well, and as I look at the charts, we're going to be down, absent any change in transportation funding in the state of Michigan, after this next state budget year, we will be turning back 50% of our money.
That's right.
So, better to have something pretty to look at.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
I appreciate the statement, and it's obvious, looking at the plans, that it's going to be in the center of the road where any lanes that are added in the future will be. But the language of our contract isn't limited to that area, and that's where my big concern is.
The answer to that, Mr. Eisenbacher, is that the I-75 plan, as is currently approved, had to go through a decades-long environmental assessment. And when they published the plan, it only shows that particular area going through Troy as being filled in. Now, that being said, so I feel very confident if and when they ever get funds, that's all it will do. But that being said, the other improvements that we are looking at, we're being very judicious in where it's being placed, so that while they're doing any work, or if they happen to make some other dramatic changes, although again, highly, highly unlikely, the investment that we're putting in is not going to be disturbed.
I appreciate that, I mean, you had that in writing, and I appreciate that, but the contract we're entering into doesn't say that.
The resolution that you have there is an MDOT standard resolution, and they will not change it. This is their resolution, this is their permit, we can't do the work without this permit. You can rest assured, we've negotiated every time we could to try to get it changed, and they are not at the position to change any more than what is there.
Okay. I have an, if I may, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
The ponds that are going in, you mentioned the environmental impact, doesn't, having a couple, it's two ponds if I read the plans correctly?
Two ponds, correct.
And two of the cloverleafs. Don't those ponds have an impact on their environmental impact? So do they have an option to argue?
Your use and my use of the word environmental impact get to things like storm water control, exactly right. And that's part of what we're looking to do, is actually capture that storm water and reuse it, so that we can then irrigate and do some rather, well, good stuff with it. The MDOT, when they do an environmental assessment, it's a different word. Really, what they're taking a look at is noise pollution, how it's going to impact the existing conditions that are there now. It really, environmental is a big stretch of a word, I think, when they do an environmental assessment.
Okay, that was going to be my next question, is are we reusing the rainwater? Or are we going to have to put new pipes in?
We are capturing the storm water that's there, and we will also be using a well to be able to make sure during the dry season that we don't, that we have adequate water to be able to supply the source.
This is not going to be additional city water usage?
No, no, it's actually to reduce the use of city water.
Okay.
Any other questions? You want to move a resolution for this item, Councilwoman Beltramey?
Sure. This is a very long resolution, but I'll read it anyway so that people are clear. Whereas the I-75 Big Beaver interchange lies in the MDOT right-of-way and within the boundary of the city of Troy and the city of Troy's Downtown Development Authority, whereas the city of Troy has plans and specifications being prepared for an interchange enhancement project at I-75 and Big Beaver Road, and permit application under the Michigan Department of Transportation Permit Number 63174-0019-09, whereas the city of Troy will authorize a contract and provide all funds for the proposed construction of the improvements, whereas the city of Troy will enter into a separate maintenance contract with MDOT for the maintenance of all improvements constructed within the interchange at no cost to MDOT, whereas MDOT has a future widening project along I-75 in Oakland County that will impact the I-75 Big Beaver Road interchange, and whereas when MDOT widens I-75 at Big Beaver Road, the interchange will be reconstructed, and any proposed landscaping monuments, decorative infill panels, detention pound sidewalk, pedestrian signals, et cetera, placed under MDOT Permit Number 63174-0019-09, impacted by the future I-75 widening, will be removed to facilitate the work by MDOT. Therefore, be it resolved that the Troy City Council hereby affirms that the city of Troy will be required to remove at their cost and with their resources all landscaping monuments, decorative infill panels, et cetera, constructed under MDOT Permit Number 63174-0019-09, that are impacted by the I-75 widening project, a minimum of two months prior to the start of construction of I-75 widening project, and that MDOT will not be responsible or liable for replacing any landscaping monuments, decorative infill panels, detention pound sidewalk, pedestrian signals, et cetera, constructed under MDOT Permit Number 63174-0019-09, and impacted by any future reconstruction of the I-75 Big Beaver interchange and/or future widening of I-75.
Do we have a sec? Moved by Councilwoman Beltramey, seconded by Councilwoman Kirwin, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. You understand that this is the resolution that MDOT is requiring in order for us to do our project.
Mayor?
Discussion, Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
The second line of that last paragraph that Councilwoman Beltramey just read, "Therefore, be it resolved that Troy City Council affirms that the city of Troy will be required to remove," not "may be required to move, but will be required to remove. That's beyond a stretch. That's not, if it's impacted, we'll ask you to remove it. There's no, I don't see how there's any option for us not to have to remove it by this resolution, other than the fact that they've told you that we most likely won't have to remove it on the project. I'd like to amend it to switch the word "will" to "may be required." Or is that directly contrary?
Actually, I looked to Mr. Hootery, who's in the audience, and we pushed to get "may" put into that. Ultimately, they are the final authorities, so they don't want us to have any quote-unquote wiggle room. So "will" is the word.
Councilwoman Beltramey?
Just a comment, and I had some, little bit of heartburn about us using money, putting improvements in there, even knowing that this project, quite honestly, could be 20 years down the road, and I don't think that's a huge stretch. But it does say, at the end of that sentence, it says, "will be required to remove," if they were constructed under this permit and impacted by.
Right.
So it's not only constructed, they must show that it's been impacted. Now, you know, it is their playground, so, understanding, they can't say that. But quite honestly, I don't think we do our own citizens any service to leave things as they are anywhere in the city, just to because we may have to tear it out later. We all plant shrubbery in our homes, plant tulips, do all that kind of stuff, and know that next year if we have another child and decide to add on or whatever, we may have to pull that up. But for the foreseeable future, and I think that's what we need to work with, with these kinds of things, is that's the right thing to do, because quite honestly, with transportation funding being what it is, this project may never get off the ground.
And also, too, with the wording of "and impacted by" in there, and you can see on the plans that they're not saying that we're going to have to take everything out. And I truly think that with our working relationship with MDOT, if we were able to get it changed in the wording, we would have. That's my feeling. Yes, Councilwoman Kirwin?
And I don't think the concern really is with the landscape design out there in the barren area, but what we're kind of talking about, the possibility of the eight-foot sidewalks. In the meantime, those eight-foot sidewalks are a safety feature. So this is under the bridge in a small area, I would love if there were some decorative features there, but I'm not anticipating it. The paint is what we're talking about, and heavens, the paint looks so much better on the one side where we have it. So for the eight-foot sidewalks, in general, we put them in whenever we can, and so to that end, I will be supporting this. I understand the language, I understand the requirement, the more trees we can have in the area, the less water we can use, and the better we can conserve it and appreciate it, I think's a good, a good way to go.
Okay, Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Councilmember Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrame?
Yes.
Motion passes. Were there any other items that were requested? Mrs. Bartholomew, on the, yes? Okay, so then we'll go back to E.2, which is nominations to boards and committees, and there were several on here, students that have requested reappointments. Does someone want to move some of those forward?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
I would, just to begin, by placing Anita, and I'm sorry, on the reading of these names, I apologize. Anita Vazudivin, Vazudivin? Councilwoman Beltrame, were you volunteering a pronunciation?
I think it's Vazudivin.
Okay, Vazudivin. This is for the Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities. She's requesting reappointment. I also see that...
You're forwarding that name forward?
I am forwarding that. We have under Historical Commission?
Historic District Commission?
No.
It says Historical Commission. This is on the next page, 1, 2, 3 now. Terry?
Navartel.
Navartel, requests reappointment. And? I see under...
There was another one. Yvanna Lou, requests reappointment also?
Oh, good catch, yes, Andrew Lou. Thank you. I also see now, is it Park and Rec? A student who requests reappointment, Divya Subramanian. I see under Traffic Committee, Yan Ting or Sam Jung. And then we have a lot for Youth Council, those who request reappointment, Willa Adamo, Desha Bora, Vikram Prasad, Savita Rama, Shayina Sikri, Rachida Singh, Emily Wang, David Wiley. I would move those names forward. Those are just students who request reappointment.
Support.
Court. Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrame, that we forward those names, as read, I won't read them all again. There was, I did want to ask a question, though. There are several of the students that Youth Committee voted to have, you know, reappointed to that committee. There was one on there that asked to be on Planning Commission also, and we're looking for a student for Planning Commission. So, I will contact that individual and ask them, I mean, I have no problem with them us reappointing to that, and see if they want, would prefer to do that, I don't know, maybe they do, maybe they don't. But they had that down as one of their second choices, and when I read through their application and their background and everything, I thought that looked like a good student for Planning Commission. Yes, Councilwoman Beltrame?
Question for the clerk, please.
Yes.
There is a note here that the school district notifies about the Park Simrec appointment, and I, quite honestly, from the note, I don't know if that means that they have and they recommend Mr. Huff be reappointed, or they have not yet recommended. We haven't heard from him yet?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Haven't heard, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Madam Mayor, those appointments are made at the discretion of the president, who is elected, or elected at their organizational meeting in July, so that, those, that appointment won't be forwarded until after the president appoints. But I do have, if I may, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Kerwin?
You made a suggestion. I know that the Youth Council forwarded the names because it's in the minutes, and I noticed, too, that one had put, seemed to put as first, second, and third choice, the same thing, Youth Council.
Right.
However, the, they're actually passed a resolution after interviewing, and so I was torn on that. That's not a reappointment, those are new appointments, I believe. And so, that was my understanding of that, and none of those has been placed on the table, I believe, tonight.
Those names did come forward?
I think these are reappointments.
Mrs. Bartholomew, or Mrs. Hough, could you clarify that?
Youth Council is somewhat different than the other student appointments, because they are aboard with 13 regular members, so they go through quite an interview process, and they have one meeting where they interview students and make their recommendations based on that.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a resolution for forwarding those names forward to vote on next week, then, so, the forwarding motion, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrame?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Are we then going to wait, do you think, on the new appointments for the student applicants, or will we be forwarding them? They're the last on the sheet.
Well, we need to, there still are space enough for the three names, then we should do them tonight, if they've already said, so you want them those forward?
Yes.
Another motion, then?
Yes.
All right. Already want to, want us to amend the motion we had, or just do another one?
I'll just... And so, we have, I will forward the names of the recommended student applicants from the Youth Council, and that would be Supriya Jalupar, Ananya Lukundan, Sumana, is it Pale? Pale?
Pale. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Brumfield, that we forward the names of the students for the Youth Committee for an appointment, not a reappointment. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrame?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Motion passes. Before is the ratification of the contract extension to the Troy Fire Staff Officers Association 2009, 2011.
Your honor, members of the council?
Yes.
About eight or nine years ago, the city adopted the interest-based approach to negotiating collective bargaining agreements, and we have been very successful in this regard. The most recent example is the agreement extension before you between the Troy Fire Service Officers Association and the City of Troy. This extension carries two major elements. One is a wage freeze for the next two fiscal years, and the second is a higher prescription drug rider deductible that will be in place. We know that times are tough, and we have made an effort with ASPI now, TFSOA, as well as what you'll see, I believe, July 15th, with the Troy Police Officers Association, making similar sacrifices to extend contracts and provide still a high level of service. Approval is recommended, and at this time, I'd like to have Lieutenant Rod Bovensee say a few words about the process, and then between Rod and Peggy and I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate that. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. The Troy Fire Department has always been on the cutting edge of everything, especially under the leadership of Chief Nelson. Several years ago, our department recognized that we cannot continue to hire people at the cost that we're hiring them, and we developed a lower classification for an entry-level classification. We worked with Mr. Zerlag on developing that. It was several years before it was implemented, but it was implemented. We've always been wanted to, ones to try to do the right thing for the city. The interest-based bargaining for this has been phenomenal. The first contract that we negotiated took a little over two years. When we started the interest-based bargaining, hit with John, the contract that we're under right now, when we negotiated it, we did it before the coffee was done, cold. So, and this contract was similar, because everybody wants to do the right thing for the city, and we enjoy doing this, we enjoy working with Mr. Zerlag and his team, and we too try to do the right thing for the city, and we feel that staff tries to do the right thing for us. So, I just wanted to let you know that we think interest-based bargaining, or the interest-based process, whether it's for bargaining or for any other process, is a good one, because it truly brings out what is needed to be done, and it works out what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments. I certainly appreciate the Troy Fire Staff Officers Association wanting to extend the contract, and with the provisions being made, which will serve our community well and give us the continuity that we need. I'm confident that council will pass this resolution this evening. I do appreciate all the efforts by staff and on both sides in negotiating. It truly is an art to do so in such a, a good manner. So, if we could have a resolution, Councilwoman Kerwin?
Resolve, the Troy City Council hereby ratifies a two-year extension of the 2006-2009 collective bargaining agreement between the City of Troy and Troy Fire Staff Officers Association, TFSOA, for the period July 1st, 2009, through June 30th, 2011, as recommended by city administration, and hereby authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the final agreement.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrame, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, then, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrame?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Thank you for coming this evening, too. E.5 is a standard resolution, purchasing resolution, an award to the low bidder, Contract 09-4, Park and Cumbermere Water Main Replacement. Do we have a resolution?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
Resolve, the Troy City Council hereby awards Contract Number 09-4, Park and Cumbermere Roads Water Main Replacement to Deponio, if I pronounced that right, Contract Inc., 51173, Simone Industrial Drive, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48316, at an estimated total cost And be it further resolved that the award is contingent upon submission of proper contract and bid documents, including bonds, insurance certificates, and all specified requirements, and if any additional work is required, Troy City Council hereby authorizes such additional work in an amount not to exceed 10% of the total project cost.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? Questions? Got Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
As impressed, this came in significantly below the estimated amount. I would guess that that's a reflection on the state of the economy, and these companies are a lot more hungry for work. I don't know if you guys have had any feedback on that?
Yeah, we're seeing prices right now that are significantly lower than what we anticipated. There's been a push recently with stimulus jobs coming out now through the Highway Department, but those haven't, enough of them haven't hit the market yet to really affect prices, so the stuff that we're getting out early is getting very good prices.
Good, thank you.
I thought it was just good negotiating.
Still good, still good, so I can't hear too much.
Madam Mayor? We hear some nightmares from some cities who don't maintain their infrastructure. I'm so pleased to see that we do, and that we continue to do it, and this will be a nice improvement in that area, so, thank you.
Any other questions? The vote, then, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Beltrame?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Motion passes. E.6 is Amendment to Troy City Code, Updates of Chapter 82, Property Maintenance Codes, Amendments to Chapter 48, Litter, Chapter 82B, Dangerous Buildings, Chapter 88, Nuisance, and deletion of Chapter 89 Weed Control. And it looks like Mr. Schimek wants to tell us about it more. He said to me earlier, this has been a Monday, in capital letters, Monday, so, yes, I think it is, and the full moon's already passed, so it had nothing to do with that.
Glad to hear that, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. The primary item you have before you this evening is the amendments to Chapter 82, which is the adoption of the 2000, or adoption and amendments to the 2006 Property Maintenance Code. The current code that is in effect in the City of Troy officially is the 1993 Boca National Property Maintenance Code. That document is no longer in print. A resident of the City of Troy has no way of getting it. They are more than willing, or more than welcome, to come in and look at our reference copies that we keep at our office, as well as at the city clerk's office, but really, that's the only source that someone can get for that document at this time. So, we are looking to update to the 2006 edition, in this case, the ICC, International Code Council, Property Maintenance Code. In August of 2008, the 2006 ICC versions of the Building, Mechanical, Plumbing, and Electrical Codes went into effect in Michigan and throughout Michigan, so coordination of these documents together is much more effective when we're using the same year. Officially, based on the current text of our Property Maintenance Code, if the Property Maintenance Code says to install and maintain something in accordance with the Mechanical Code, we have to go to the 1993 Boca Mechanical Code to find those requirements, because that's the reference document that it uses. So, we've had five updates in the code since 1993, and we're certainly looking forward to having a more up-to-date document. In doing this update, we also have done a better job of coordinating, coordinating the infractions and enforcement provisions with Chapter 100 of the City Code on municipal civil infractions. We are also proposing to coordinate a number of current provisions within the city codes together into a single location, into a single document. Currently, Chapter 82A, excuse me, 82V, is the dangerous building provisions of the City Code, and those are being brought into Section 108 of the Property Maintenance Code. The requirements for weed control within the city are contained within Section 1, or Chapter 89. We're looking to bring those in to the Property Maintenance Code. Requirements for litter on private property are in Chapter 48 of the City Code, and it's kind of scattered all over. So, we're taking a holistic approach, if you will, and combining all those sections into the, the single property maintenance document. So, a number of the other subsequent resolutions that you have on your table this evening are to delete those sections, and in some cases, entire chapters of the City Code, so that those items could be brought into the Property Maintenance Code, thereby giving us one complete document. us one complete document dealing with the maintenance of property within the city. We are also including in, in with the 2006 version, we're going to include the entire text. Rather than just doing a reference or adoption by reference the way we had in the past, the Property Maintenance Code's about 46 pages. And rather than putting in 12 pages of amendments and then having to try and compare and contrast the documents together to find out what it says, we're basically going to print the entire text within the City Code and ordinance. That way, we won't run into a problem. Hopefully, we won't wait another 16 years to adopt the next one, but should we happen to do that, we won't have any problems with the document no longer being in print and no longer being available to the public. They can then see all of the requirements and be able to put those things together. You've heard some comments from citizens in the past that, you know, City of Farmington Hills has this code and we don't. What we do, it's just not in Chapter 82. It's in the base document that's out there, but nobody can put the two together effectively. And we've tried to do that in this case. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and look forward to adoption. I did find one typo.
Uh-huh.
In 46 pages, it wasn't too bad. It's actually on page 100 of your agenda. It's in Section 302.4.5, and actually, the title is not on page 100, it's on page 99. But in that text, if you go to the fourth line from the bottom, there is a strike-through on, the word "on," that was struck through in our staff evaluation of this document, and it's shown "strike-through" is the third word in the fourth line from the bottom, and ultimately should be deleted from the adopted text.
So it should be struck through?
It should be. Yeah, the word "on" was replaced with the word "against," but the strike-through still remains in the printed.
This is on page 100?
It's on page 100.
And the section is?
Well, the section number officially is on page 99, but the top of page 100 is Section 302.4.5, and the fourth line from the bottom of that section, the third word is, it's shown as "strike-through on," and that, in fact, should be deleted from the final text.
But we wanted to change our resolution because you've already referenced it says, as presented?
Okay.
Right?
I, I will defer to the parliamentarian and attorney on that.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Steymac? No.
I already submitted a very extensive document of questions.
I know, I saw those. Yeah, okay, good. Mrs. Blume, do we?
Let everyone else go first.
Do we need to change the resolution? Would that change or not?
It is listed here in the document as recommended as a strike-through, so because of that, hopefully, the clerk, when publishing it, will, will catch that and will not publish it with, they will publish it with the "on" removed from there. So with that, no, the, the resolution as recommended is certainly appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Councilwoman Kirwin?
We need to do this more often. I mean, as much as we can make accessible and user-friendly, we simply need to do that, not just with this section, but with everything that we do.
I, I would, however, say that the 780-page building code and the 500-some-page residential building code is probably too large of a document to put in, in its entirety into our code, as well as the maintenance of that document as it gets updated.
Your point is well taken. Whenever we can, in other areas as well, we will. Thank you.
I'm very grateful to see this. The combining makes sense, so that common sense approach is something that we need to do more often.
And that was the road that we started on many years ago with trying to work on this, you know, because it has to be user-friendly because that's the whole purpose in it, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, Councilman Eisenbacher promises not to ask all 14 questions, but he has something that he still has, wants to bring up.
Yes.
Councilman Eisenbacher?
Yeah, I thank you for bringing this forward to us again. I know we started back in 2001, and this has been quite a bit of work. 106.2, so that would be?
What page?
Unfortunately, I printed it, and when I printed it, the pages didn't come with it, so.
Okay.
You have to scroll through till you get to 106.2 in terms of section.
Page 86.
Thank you.
And you have, what's your question on that?
Question is, is basically, once you are violating this code, each day continues as a violation. If you have a fire, or you have roof damage, like a tree falls on your house, or there's the sort of acts of God kind of damage that insurance policies refer to, with the strict enforcement and the way it's written, every day that you don't fix it, you're in violation. And how do we handle the, let's say, the discretion of your code enforcement for this? And what is the principle or policy behind that?
Sure, if I may. The, as indicated in Section 106, it basically says, after a notice of violation has been issued.
Mm-hmm.
So our notice of violation would basically cite the violations of the ordinance as well as give a reasonable amount of time to make those repairs, aside from emergency conditions, and I'll accept those because if a building's about to fall down on somebody else's property, we're not going to, reasonable time might be immediately. But shall we say, standard procedure, depending on what the type of repair is, might be 10 days, 20 days, 30 days to repair. If they are in violation beyond that, then each day that it continues to be in violation could be deemed to be a separate offense. We could write a separate municipal infraction on that. Our history with the courts has not necessarily shown that that garners us any greater favor with the courts. They, we try and approach things in a very simplistic, straightforward manner, and it is, you know, on June 1st, the person that cited for this violation, they were given until June 20th to, to make those corrections. On June 21st, the corrections were not corrected, and so we wrote them the court summons, and now it's June 28th, and we're here in court. Well, the fact that we wrote them another one on June 21st, and June 22nd, and June 23rd, you know, the days leading up to the 28th, in our, in our experience, hasn't garnered us any greater degree of prosecution through the court. We, as a matter of process, always inspect the site again just before the court appearance so that we can accurately depict to the, to the magistrate or to the judge what the conditions are on the date of the, of the hearing. So that if it's, it's not that we wrote the ticket on the 21st, and we never looked back at the site, and we don't know what the conditions are at the time of the hearing, we always, as a, as a standard practice, re-inspect the site just prior to the hearing so we know the current status of the site.
Mrs. Blume, I see you saying.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mayor. And just, Mr. Steymac has certainly eloquently stated what the enforcement part of it is, but I did just want to say, we did make a change in it. It did say previously shall, and, and based on your concerns, we did change that to can. But again, it is important that we have the ability to write separate infractions because there are certain persons who, it is a very correctable situation, and they choose to pay the fine rather than take care of the situation. And because property maintenance is our goal, compliance is our goal, we really did need to have this in here.
Okay. I didn't catch the removal of the word "shall" when I was comparing the two documents.
It, it was changed to can.
Okay. I appreciate that because when I was trying to research this section way back, I found an article where a rental owner had a condition, there was a fire, and then they cited him for the 44 days pri, prior, and the fine was more than the house was worth, but that was a different city, and obviously, what you've laid out in the language here won't, and what you've clarified, that doesn't apply.
And I should just clarify, instead of can, it's may, so.
Okay.
Mine says can.
Does it? Okay.
Oh.
Mine says can.
Mine says can, too.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Yeah, it is can, sorry.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's, it's all the discretion that we need for that kind of circumstance. Also, in the previous paragraph, one of the, the comma was in red instead of in black, and I saw that in a couple spaces on the copy I printed out. We're, we're considering the red version to be accurate, right?
The red would be a deleted item, so the comma would be deleted. I'm sorry, it would be inserted.
Insert, okay.
But it should be.
The top, strike through.
Yes.
Okay. So 106.1 has a comma in it. And then I also noticed that on the next page, there was a space that was added, and it's got the red dash instead of the, the space, but under 107.3, so it's just the editing mark, it's, we will have a space.
Correct. Any more?
Yes. 108.1, .1, .6, City Council action.
108.1, six?
.1, .6. It's the top of the page.
Page 90.
And this ties into the comment you just made. We're, we're stating here is that City Council action for demolition or requiring all the necessary repairs, they don't have more than 21 days. And like you said, sometimes a more extensive repair would require up to 30 days. I would like to give the City Council more discretion at this point than 21 days, especially considering inclement weather.
Mrs. Blume?
Yes, and again, that was another comment that you had pointed out, and we did incorporate that, the language that is added, so that it shall not exceed 21 days after the hearing and our resolution, the language that's added is unless the City Council determines that weather conditions justify a longer time period to complete the necessary repairs.
Problem is, we can't predict the weather.
But.
So that'd be after our action. I mean, that's.
Right. But don't remember, this is a two-sided thing. The person trying to correct their dangerous or unsafe building has one opinion about how to do it. The neighbors who live in that area have another opinion. They want it taken care of because they don't want it to be a danger to children in the neighborhood or unsightly. So, you know, we can't be too lenient.
I agree.
Because they couldn't, you know, get it. So I think that if we, we have that provision in there, if there's something that, that comes up, but again, we have to enforce getting it done, because if we have a building that is dangerous or unsafe, that's why the council is, has to take the action. Mrs. Blume?
Mayor, just to also indicate that there is a writ of appeal that, that is provided in Section 108.1.1.10.
I agree with you, Mayor.
All right.
I mean, most of the time, if it's a slightly kind of issue, where they have improper debris in their yard, not cutting their grass, I wouldn't see us giving them more than seven days. But if it's a more substantial item, as Mr. Steymac pointed out, I think 21 days limits the council quite a bit, because the scope of this document is, also covers substantial items. And if the list is extremely long, I'd also see that you can't get through the whole list in a short period of time necessarily. I just think the council should have more discretion than 21 days. I'd like to see, the thing that jumped out at me is 45 days, which we have elsewhere, but that's purely our discretion. We can give them seven days. We don't have to give them 45 or 21 days.
Councilwoman Kirwin?
I just want to point out that this is after the hearing.
Mm-hmm.
So there've been other attempts before this hearing.
To get them to fix their building, right?
Absolutely.
So they had more time already.
And clearly, the hearing is an opportunity for us to become, made aware of that, but they wouldn't be before us, for a hearing unless it had reached a point where management felt that council action is, it looks like we might have a.
Mr. Steymac?
Attorney.
Yeah, if I may, and Councilwoman Kirwin brings up a, a good point. In my experience, and officially, I think there's only been two structures that have come, that I brought before you for action on a dangerous building. In those two experiences, and other ones that have not come to you for an appeal of our decision, my staff has worked with that property owner probably for nine months, from the time we originally cited the violations to the time that it comes to you, between the public hearing notices and the title searches and the serving of notices and our initial violation notices and everything, typically, it's nine months from the time that's a structure in this condition comes to our, to our knowledge. And if a property owner is working to make those repairs in those nine months, it doesn't come to you for, you know, we generally try not to have somebody make nine months' worth of repairs and then come to ask you to order a, issue an order to tear it down after they've done it. It's only where that nine months of activity have resulted in, in no accomplishments that we come to you with these types of situations.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Kirwin?
And just a reminder, I believe we've been on the last one, the situation ended up being dangerous for our own fire department.
Right.
That in the event something happened, our own fire department would be in danger in trying to do anything on that. And so I think it's in those cases where we really have to have something, and 21 days is still three weeks. So I feel strongly about, about this.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
And I believe that the council would act to give even less than 21 days in cases where it's dangerous, but in cases of hardship that we haven't seen, that we may see, given the economic conditions that we're in right now, where people are choosing between food and repairing their houses, potentially, people are choosing between house payments and such, I mean, not everyone in the city can necessarily afford repairs immediately. I mean, and I do give credit to the building departments if they are working with the people. That's wonderful. I just don't think our council should limit ourselves, the discretion. Okay.
Again, many more, because this is usually the time when we take a break and we've got other items. Do you want to come back to it, or do you have any, any more that you need to add?
I've got, I mean, I just want to click. This is the biggest rewrite of code that we've had since I've ever been on council. I mean, we're striking quite a few chapters.
Yes.
I mean, we spent.
No, I understand that. I just asked because of, of fellow councilmen.
I'm fine. Let's finish your note.
All right, go ahead.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just a question for Mr. Eisenbacher. Are you saying that you would have a better zone of comfort if the last line in that section stated that unless City Council determines that conditions justify a longer time period, conditions therefore being operationally defined by you and not relegated to weather?
Yeah, that's an excellent suggestion.
What's your suggestion?
Yeah, that's, strike the word "weather," and then it gives a lot more flexibility to the council. Under the definition of dwelling units, did mobile homes count? It's a question I had, and I didn't see the response.
A mobile home cited on the, if we're talking about, you know, Troy Mobile Home Villas, those are considered to be dwelling units. They, they have cooking, heating, sleeping, and sanitation facilities within them, so that would be a dwelling unit.
Okay. Because the thing that threw me with our definition of dwelling unit is that it permanently cited.
Well, the.
Oh, but it's on the Frost Tree Masonic Foundation.
Right. The, the, the dwellings in the Troy Mobile Home Villas are permanently cited. They, they can be removed, so I guess in terms of permanently, I mean, you know, I've said before, the pyramids are getting close to permanent, everything else is temporary, because we can always take them down and move them. But by the definition, that, that would meet the definition of a dwelling.
And then going on to weeds in the back, and also building off.
Page 10.
Again, I don't, unfortunately, I don't. Weeds under definitions, and definitions is under?
201 is the, or 202?
202, yes. In terms of being able to provide more information in what we're planning with the zoning ordinance that was proposed by Mr. Carlisle.
Right.
Getting more information out there, being able to use hyperlinks and cross-referencing, I'd like to see us in the future have pictures so that the residents have a lot more understanding of what we're talking about than the common name and the Latin name.
Sure. We did look at that and discuss that among staff. A common methodology of doing that is, from a code language, is what's called the code commentary. You have the official legal text of the code, and then you have commentary that helps explain how you do it. I have some objection to putting pictures within the document, because then it becomes, well, is it the picture or the word? You know, my weed doesn't look like your picture, so therefore it's not the weed. But certainly, we can put together and certainly prepare a document for the website that has, as you say, pictures and links. That's commentary. That's not the enforced language, but that helps the user in using the document.
Yeah, because I tried researching several of these using Google and trying to find pictures.
I will absolutely agree with you. I have no idea what any of these are, but I luckily have staff available to me that do.
Some of them, yeah. The thistle, yeah.
Or I called them a hair.
Your Honor, yeah. Just a question, Your Honor, if I may?
Yes.
I can understand having a, you know, a term, Canada thistle, and a portrait of saying, and having someone say, well, that's not exactly a Canada thistle to me. But if there were to be an appendix, if you will, that's part of the ordinance, that indicates, this is an example of a Canada thistle and so forth, that that would be easier for the reader, as opposed to having a separate website document, independent of this ordinance.
And I'm asking, is that, is that something that we can do?
So you're just looking for more clarification, so that, that, yes. Councilman Beltrein?
It's an appealing idea, to be sure. I, I share some of Mr. Stimek's concerns. If the weed in my yard doesn't exactly match the picture that's now part of the ordinance, then how can you tell me to remove it? Because this one has seven thorns and mine only has five, and therefore it must be something different. And with a commentary being standard practice, if you will, I think that's a much safer way for us to go, particularly if it's linkable from this chapter. Madam Mayor?
Councilman Kerwin?
I agree, and I agree with the suggestion that came from Mr. Stimek on that. I mean, even if you think of poison ivy at different times, looks very, very different. And that's just one of those listed here. So I think Mr. Stimek's idea, rather than including it in there, a summary, as he said, would be a better, more prudent way to go.
Mayor?
Councilman Eisenbacher?
When I was thinking picture, I wasn't thinking we grab a camera and we go out and snap a picture. I was thinking, like, the scientific picture that you see in a textbook that's defining what this plant is, where it shows, I mean, I've seen them arti, you probably have all seen them artistic.
The dictionary.
Where it shows, yeah, it's the dictionary kind of picture, not just a random picture. And my interest in this is helping it be understandable and allowing enforcement easier, not so much causing a hurdle for enforcement. Because, I mean, if I see my neighbor's yard and there's something growing, I don't know if it's appropriate or not to even talk to the neighbor and say, hey, that's an illegal bush, or whatever.
I don't think most people are going to be contacting their neighbors unless it comes to a situation with noxious weeds where it's very noticeable, like we have some neighborhood areas right now where there's some problems because people aren't cutting. That's a different matter. Then they should just be cutting and getting them out of there. But most of the time, people aren't going to be doing that. Yes, Mr. Stimek?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The one other thing that I would say is that this list of terms comes straight out of the state statute. So this is, this is the same thing that is being applied throughout the state under the, under the weed order, the State of Michigan Weed Control Ordinance. They're very well, I unfortunately haven't done the research prior to this evening's meeting, there already may be websites out there that explain that in terms of the state text. But that list that is proposed to be inserted for the definite, definition of weeds comes straight from the state statute.
Yeah, the best information I was able to find was on a university extension website.
MSU?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And then, the next one is on the following page, Section 10, I'm sorry, 301.3, vacant structures and land. All vacant structures and premises thereof or vacant land shall be maintained in a clean, safe, secure, and sanitary condition as provided herein, so as not to cause a blighted, blighting problem or adversely affect the public health and safety. And I thought that was just extremely general, because we don't really, we don't have definitions for what clean is, what safe is. Secure, I believe we have defined in terms of making sure doors aren't unlocked and windows aren't broken or open. And I'm curious if we could get any examples. I wanted to get some examples in here, and now I understand why you didn't want to, because of the commentary statement, but...
Hasn't that wording been in there for quite a while?
It's hard to understand.
Yeah, it is language that comes from the, from the national, and I should say, a good deal of this language actually comes from the National Code. I guess in terms of being more specific, it basically says, shall be maintained in a clean, safe, sanitary condition as provided herein. The standards for clean, safe, sanitary conditions are those contained within this code. So the requirements for a weather-tight enclosure, the requirements for painting or peeling paint and those things, those are already defined. Those are the standards we use in deciding whether a vacant structure is meeting the requirements of this code. You know, that, the somewhat difficult situation with regards to vacant structures is, one of our hammers, one of our tools, is to cause a structure to be vacated. If you don't fix this, you have to move out. With a vacant structure, that's, that's no threat. So we, a lot of the public health and safety issues that are usually applied to occupied structures don't apply. What this section says is, even though you're not occupied, we're going to use those same standards in determining what is a properly maintained structure. So even though there's no danger to residents of the structure by peeling paint and deteriorating wood, we still want that vacant structure to be maintained to that same level. The standards that we use are those provided herein, which are the same standards we would use to an occupied structure.
Okay. That makes sense. I understand. Thank you. And then, four pages later, 304.14, insect screens. Sort of the commentary. One thing that I've seen in our futures report and a lot of the documents that this city puts together, is we, we talk about ourselves as being a unique community. And it concerns me a lot when we say, this is standard language, we just need to accept it. I mean, because we are tweaking this to our community, our norms, we aren't just taking the standard document. And so that's why I consider this to be very important, and I've put a lot of time into it. So that's why I appreciate your indulgence in going through this. Insect screens, this one jumped out at me sort of funny because in my travels...
In Europe.
In Europe. They don't, I wish they had screens on the windows, especially in the summer.
Would you, would you like me to go lobby for adoption of the property maintenance?
And it wasn't clear to me exactly, I mean, I saw two ways to read this section.
Is this a number? Could you give a reference?
304.14.
304.14, sorry. Insect screens. I couldn't, it wasn't clear to me in reading this. I could read it two different ways. If this is only for food preparation areas, or every area where there's an opening.
Well, it officially is for required ventilation openings. So it's windows that are required in order to meet ventilation. The Property Maintenance Code, as well as the Mechanical Code, requires ventilation of occupied spaces. The amount of that ventilation is a function of either the square foot area of the space, or the number of occupants that are provided for in the space. That ventilation can also be provided either mechanically, through the ventilation system, or it can be provided with natural openings to the outside. So if the, if that ventilation is provided by the provision of windows, operable windows, then between the months of April to November, those windows are supposed to have screens on them, so that a occupant of the building can actually open the window and do that and not then have problems with insects and other things. And what we find is, without the screens, people don't use the windows, therefore we end up with air quality conditions in the building. But if the windows are not required for ventilation purposes, if the ventilation is provided by natural, or, excuse me, mechanical ventilation, then the screens would not be required.
Okay, so the requirements of the fire code, where you have your fenestration sizes and such, those wouldn't, those aren't part of the section, and the fact that you have requirements for windows on all the bedrooms?
Right. The requirement for the emergency escape and rescue opening...
Have to be separate.
Yeah, it's separate. That is not a required ventilation opening. So if you provide mechanical ventilation as part of the mechanical system, that emergency escape and rescue opening could be a solid door. Officially, it doesn't have to be a window, it has to be an opening in the wall. So it could be a door.
Okay, and that answers my next question on bathrooms, too. And then, 404.4.1, room area. Every room shall have at least 120 square feet, and every bedroom shall contain at least 70 square feet. Concerned with this section and with the next section, which is access for bedrooms, bedrooms shall not constitute the only means of access to other bedrooms or habitable spaces, and shall not serve as the only means of egress from other habitable spaces. When was the first time the building codes were put in place?
Well, in the State of Michigan, it was 1974. In the city of Troy, it was 19, I want to say 66. I take that back. I actually have a 1939 town, Troy Township Building Code. So, but I guess, city of Troy would be 55 when we became a city, but I actually have a 39 Township Building Code, so before that.
So I noted that the very beginning, under historic buildings, historic buildings are exempt. So if you're old enough to be a historic building and you have some historical significance, you wouldn't have to comply with these two sections. But other buildings that are old, that didn't have to comply with building codes by this ordinance we're passing, would be required to have all their living rooms at least 120 square feet in size, and if their house was built with bedrooms that are sequential instead of parallel, they'd have to not use the sequential, the first access bedroom. The first access bedroom would end up being a hallway by our code. And the only exception is for units with less than two bedrooms. I'm very concerned about not exempting the buildings prior to 1966 or 1930, you said 1934?
39.
Or 30, 1939, if those sections weren't in it, because those were legally built houses. And now it's not just making a non-conforming property, this is making it an illegal property. And I mean, we have a lot of consternation at this table when we make a non-conforming property. And this is a whole, a whole nother level. Because if you look elsewhere in here, you can't even sell the house if it has these conditions then, because it's a non-conformance.
Do we have any houses that meet that standard still left standing?
I, I would have to say, now, with regard to the minimum dimension...
Right.
There certainly may be some homes that have very small rooms that are used for habitable purposes. With regard to the egress from one bedroom to another, or having a means of egress out of a living room only through a bedroom, we have 25,000 single-family residential structures, detached, single-family structures in the city. Offhand, I can't think of ever being in one that had that condition. That's not to say that they don't exist out there, but it, to me, would be an extreme exception to common practice that we see out in the field. You know, and especially the, I guess, the sequential room, the sequential bedrooms solution might be to take the wall down in between and make it one big bedroom, if you comply with code. With regards to the bedroom being the only means of egress, that would be similar to, and maybe using a basement is probably a bad one, but you go down the stairs in the basement and you go into the bedroom first, and then you go through the door to get into the rec room. Well, it's, I don't think I've ever seen that. You know, certainly I've seen a condition where you go down the stairs, you're in the rec room, and then you go into the bedroom. But I don't think I've ever seen the reverse. You know, we've, we've been designing houses for hundreds of years in this country and in this city. Yes, we have some houses that are 100 years old. But I don't recall seeing that type of configuration prevalent in, once again, any structure that I've been
Mayor? Councilman...
A question, just whether, there could be, as you said, a structure out there. And I guess what Councilman Eisenbacher is concerned with, as I am as well, is that a house, an old house, may be deemed illegal. Where can grandfathering fit into this, Mr. Stimek? Is there something that can be a catch-all of sorts where, should something like this exist, or even some of the other requirements that we're looking at this evening, but that there be some sort of a grandfather clause for these types of situations?
Madam Mayor, in response, technically, the building code is full of grandf, the building code is the grandfathering document. An existing house does not have to comply with the building code. An existing house or structure of any type has to comply with the Property Maintenance Code. The Property Maintenance Code establishes that minimum level of compliance necessary to be a habitable structure. The building code would be a brand-new structure, or one that is added to or altered. The Property Maintenance Code deals with all those ones that were built many, many years ago. Now, within the document, there is provisions in, I think it's Section 104, for alternative materials and methods. There is an appeals process through the Building Code Board of Appeals. There's an appeals process through the State Construction Code Commission, you know, to deal with those conditions. So either administratively or judiciously, through the Boards of Appeals, a property owner has the right to present their case, showing how equivalent health and safety is provided in that structure. And either through administratively, through, once again, the site with the, you know, multiple bedrooms. Well, take the door out in between, so that you have, you know, communicating knowledge of what's going on from one bedroom to the other, which is, in my opinion, the purpose for that section of the code. And there's no locks in the way, and people have free access. So, you know, that might be an alternative material or method of complying with the code that we would look at. You know, if the room had, didn't meet a seven-foot dimension in one way, but was 25 feet in the other direction, okay, you know, I'll...
I understand that. I didn't want to interrupt you, but I think, I guess what I'm trying to say is, as you go through this, and I had four or five myself, so I may want to take a break, we are upgrading the maintenance code as we move forward as a society and we discover safety issues or better... and we discover safety issues are better this way than that way than it was 50 years ago or 100 years ago. So we continually look at these things and we upgrade them. But by upgrading them, we cause hardship on those homes that are older or... I mean, I'm looking through here and I'm at 304.181, we're talking about dead bolts, you know, doors having dead bolts. I mean, I remember when dead bolts came out. It was pretty neat when I was a kid, but they certainly weren't required. You just had your regular door knob and you locked it. If you had a dead bolt, you were pretty lucky. So all I'm saying is, I don't, what I'm suggesting is something that, as we look at these upgrades, we begin to then really teeter, in my opinion anyway, of redoing a lot of older homes or homes that don't necessarily... I mean, I know some homes that don't have garbage disposals. And there's something in here that reads that you have to have a garbage disposal or, and approved sealed container. Well, what is an approved sealed container? I mean, my mom up north had a bag underneath her sink and because she didn't have a garbage disposal and she was hooked up to a well, we just always put it in this bag, closed it up and walked it out to the trash. There's a lot of little things in here, I don't know how many of us went through and really read them. And I understand them, but I'm looking for something that would cause a way out for some structures reasonably. Is there something like that that exists that can be looked at or incorporated in this maintenance code?
Madam Mayor, in response. And I guess, other than the alternative materials and methods and the appeals procedure up in, up in the administration section in chapter one, and/or exceptions that are within the text of the document itself. No, there's not. You know, this is the, as I explain it to my staff, this is the minimum standard necessary for it to be a habitable dwelling or a building. If you don't meet this, you really shouldn't be occupied. And that's the standard and the approach. A building that fully complies with this code will not be as safe as a brand-new building today. The standards we use today for new construction are far well and above this document. To be quite honest with you, my inspectors scream at me all the time because when they go out and do posted houses inspection, it's like, you gotta cite this book. You can't pull out the building code or the electrical code and write violations. You gotta find it here because this is an existing structure. A structure meeting this requirement is much less safe than a brand-new structure built today. But these are, these are the grandfathering standards that we've, were proposed, we have adopted and are proposing to adopt for that minimum level of occupancy. I would also say that many of the sections that you are asking about and looking at are the current text of the code. They're already there.
Why didn't I say I agree with them?
I'm sorry.
Didn't say I agree with them.
And that's okay. But I, but we haven't seen the great outcry. We haven't written a number of violations regarding the double bedrooms. We haven't written a number of violations regarding minimum room size. You know, those things are in the text now and they have not been a substantial burden on the citizenry of the city of Troy in the enforcement of those provisions.
Councilman Dr. Manny.
As we talk about this, and it seems to me about eight years ago, we had the bedroom discussion and something else.
2007.
Okay, so, my memory's not all that bad. We've got lots of 30s bungalows in this town that, you know, you've raised a family in them and so maybe the attic is now two or even three bedrooms. Those people put in a new furnace. The inspector comes in, makes sure all the ductwork's square and he goes, "Oh, my goodness, look at how these bedrooms are construed." Does this modification section in the, it's 105.1, where it says the code inspector can deem that corrections would be impractical, does that allow he or she to say, "You know what? The bedrooms are only 15 feet off the ground. If something really big happens here, these kids can get out through the window and therefore I'm not going to make you take out the wall." Because quite honestly, if I just put in a new furnace and then some guy came in to check that and told me that my whole house was in violation, I don't have a mind to fix that. And taking out the wall when I got two boys and a girl of different ages is not an option for me.
Right.
Can that, can that section be used in those kinds of cases by the code inspector to say, "You know what, it's okay"?
In response, yes, they can provide it. You gotta read the, you gotta look at the entire thing. Provided that the intent and purpose of the code and the modification does not lessen health, life and fire safety requirements. So we would have to have a finding and the further requires that be documented.
Right.
In the record. That on June 15th of 2009, we did an inspection on this property and we found that it had a bedroom access only through a bedroom. And in looking at that, we found that there was no lockable locking devices on the doors. We found that there was emergency escape and rescue openings in each room. We provide, you know, determined that there was an access aisle clearly set up, you know.
Yeah.
All that stuff. Therefore, we have found, and yeah, so the modification section would allow us to do that.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Councilman Eisenbacher.
I'm concerned at the level of gymnastics involved with that. I think section 102.6, which is way at the beginning again, page 2, historic buildings, if that section were modified just to allow it to be the old buildings and the designated historic buildings? Because that gives leeway, because they have to be judged by the code official to be safe in perpetuation or, and the perpetuation of such historical buildings as in public history, public interest. If behind historic buildings we said, or buildings built before... I don't want to pick a random date, but 1939, if that's when the code enforcement and none of these buildings would have been approved with sequential rooms. Or it's 1966, if that's when the code actually started taking place about room sizes and access to the rooms. So that would cover these other sections. And it's a very small change.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Kirwan.
My only objection with that is that it's falling under historic buildings and those really aren't historic buildings. I understand your desire, but it might not fit right here because I wouldn't call 1 in 66 an historic building.
Mayor.
Maybe this would be the place, though, just to have another paragraph. Maybe not under historic buildings, but just have another paragraph.
Historic and old buildings.
Perhaps Mr. Steinbeck can come back with a recommendation of sorts. We postpone this until some of these get addressed. And we can talk directly to him, but just come back with at least this, some kind of a recommendation that gives some way out for some of these situations. Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Kirwan.
Again, you know, as this is existing, I thought the example that Councilmember Dr. Manny brought up would allow the leeway, some leeway that you seem to desire. This isn't new. We have not reviewed it online or had it before us, but... But it's been there.
It's a constant pleasure. Do you wish to continue and through the rest of this? You want to take a break and come back to it? What is your decision?
Take a break. Continue.
Want to take a 10-minute break and come back?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Take a break and come back.
We're back. We're on the same item. I was going to say, during the break, your questions all disappeared off the table.
No one's got my papers.
Here's two more.
Can I have a few?
I know, we have a few too. Go ahead.
Water closet accessibility, when you define levels...
If I could, the section number, please. 404.43?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, I'm out of order. Access from bedrooms, I did want to comment that my grandparents' house, that my great-grandparents built, actually has those sequential bedrooms on their farm. Which I always thought was weird. It's not in Troy, no.
Not in Michigan either.
But it was 100 years ago, yeah. Over 100 years ago, yep. Water closet accessibility. We have a lot of split levels in Troy. How does it, how do you define each floor? Or, I'm sorry, story? At least one water closet in Lavittordy on the same story as a bedroom? Or an adjacent story? Like, if you have a bedroom in a split level where it's downstairs, you don't have a bathroom on the main story, but you got like two of them upstairs.
Well, certainly one complete floor above or below would be the adjacent story. So if you have the split level and the bathrooms are in the two-story portion of it, every dwelling or every bedroom located within either of those two floors would be adjacent. You know, one adjacent floor.
So the ceiling would be the adjacency, not the elevation? Okay.
I don't think we define story in here, but the story definition in the building code is floor-to-ceiling. Floor-to-ceiling location.
Okay. And then, two sections down from there, 404.5 overcrowding. Curious about the practical interpretation. The number of persons occupying a dwelling unit shall not create conditions that, in the opinion of the code official, endanger the life, health, safety, or welfare of the occupants. Are you thinking in terms of number of people per bedroom, number of people per bathroom, people per square foot?
Well, it could be, it could constitute, in terms of the health and safety of the occupants. The State Health Club regarding long-term camps, that I happen to have some some knowledge of, basically says that if you're going to reside in the structure for more than 72 hours, you've got to have at least 30 square feet per person. So that would be one standard that we might use. With regard to the number of plumbing fixtures, you know, there are standards within the building code that talk about one water closet per 15 people. And that would be another standard that we could use in determining what is the adequate number of bathroom facilities. As well, we would look at evidence, you know, are they using other facilities that aren't water closets for, you know, replacement of water closets that are not available? So they're going to be incident-driven, based on the evidence we find in the field, that if they're using sinks and laundry tubs and other things for not their intended purpose, that might be an indication that there's insufficient plumbing facilities for the number of persons that are there.
Okay. I was curious because in the prior revision we had reviewed, it was very formula. It seemed to be formula-driven, not just at the discretion of the code official.
Mayor? Want to comment along with that?
Councilwoman Brumfield?
As I look at this, Mr. Steinbeck, number four, we're referring here to, I think, well, it says the maximum number of occupants shall be three. And it was referring back to, what was it, a unit, like a efficiency apartment? 404.6. In saying that, we've got a number set for that, the efficiency unit. But for 404.5, under overcrowding, we basically are just talking about the opinion of the code official, and there's no number set. And I'm just wondering if the possibility, as Mr. Councilman Eisenbacher mentioned, a formula versus just an opinion, because we are using a formula or of sorts for the efficiency unit.
The current text of the Property Maintenance Code that's in effect right now does have that formula.
I thought it did.
Yeah. Anecdotally, that's why we don't have the 2000 edition of the code in place right now, at least in my opinion, because that was one of the sticking points of adopting that document. This language is a lot more, I don't want to say gray, but it gives me a lot more discretion in making that determination. Certainly in making that determination, and hopefully making a determination that will withstand potential appeals, I'm going to base that upon recognized standards and/or evidential material that we would gather from from the field. You know, if the amount of furniture in a bedroom is such that you can't get a path of egress out of the bedroom, that would be a prima facie, would be the appropriate term, evidence that there's overcrowding condition.
And you said you had some other questions?
Well, I was...
He's done, he did his two.
There's one. Well, also, it occurred to me on this one, based on the comments from Councilwoman Brumfield. Going back to the beginning, to the intent, this code shall be construed to secure its expressed intent, which is to ensure and promote public health, safety, and welfare. Say we have a large family, and their family's so large that they're overcrowding their house, but they can't afford somewhere else. If we enforce this literally, you're throwing a family out that can't necessarily afford somewhere else, and that's a hardship. And there's, I mean, and throughout this document, there's no like hardship exception, other than the discretion of the code official.
Madam Mayor, in response, I guess, two things. Number one, I think that was part of the intent of the language that gives me greater discretion as opposed to hard, fast numbers.
Okay.
You know, if we were to say that you need 70 square feet of bedroom area per person, then the 138 square-foot bedroom that has two people in it would potentially be a violation. However, in using the language that's posed here, it gives me the discretion to look at those factors that affect health, safety, and welfare. Is there proper ventilation? Is there means of egress? Is there, you know, all of the things that we would want to have to promote health, safety, and welfare? As opposed to having a hard and fast number that you don't meet the number, so, you know, you've got to go. In your example that you cite, with a large family living in a structure, there might be many things that they can do to have that additional number of people there, and positively affect the health, safety, and welfare of those people that don't require rebuilding the house or moving to a different house. It might just be arrangement of things and methods of operation, so to speak, that will allow that to be accomplished without, you know, you don't meet the number, so, you know, two of your kids got to move, which is certainly not what our intent is.
Okay. Wish we could just codify the compassion part, but yeah. That's your discretion. And then my last item. Smoke alarms. 704.2. You had different groups, R2, R3, R4. And I didn't have a chance to cross-reference that, what does that refer to?
An R2 dwelling is a rooming house. An R3 dwelling is basically a single-family residence.
Oh.
And R4...
It's the building, not the device.
Right.
Right. Yeah, the use group classification is used throughout the building codes to define the different types of occupancies in a building. And R2, R3, and R4 are residential occupancies. Either generally a boarding house is an R2. R3 is typically a single-family residence. And R4 is some form of bed and breakfast halfway house and other types of uses. But they all, they all are facilities where people reside and sleep in that dwelling, which is why the smoke alarm provisions kick in.
This isn't our zoning designation, do we have R?
No.
R1, R2?
No, no, this is the building...
That's the other interpretation I had?
This is, this is the building code designation.
Okay. That was the end of my questions.
Okay, Councilwoman Brumfield?
Okay, just a couple. 104.4, right of entry. When I read this, I have a question, I'll read the first part, the code official, and his or her designated representatives are authorized to enter the structure or premises at reasonable times to inspect subject to constitutional and legal restrictions on unreasonable searches and seizures. I guess the question I have here, and then it's, of course, if the entry is refused, then the code official can go get a search warrant, I suppose. So why wouldn't it just say? It bothers me that we would have a part of our ordinance that says that somebody from our office can go uninvited and knock on a door. This isn't about a new building, this isn't about a new inspection or any of that. This is just, we're coming in and we're going to inspect. I, that just... It bothers me that we can go into a person's private home. And while there may be, and in one case there was, there was some reasonable concerns. I remember not, well, I don't know, a year or so ago. But if we feel like we have to go into someone's home and they don't want us to, then we just go to court. And I know that's kind of what that says anyway, it says we go to court. But just to say that we can, we're authorized to enter that structure, it just bothers me. I don't know if you can change it, take it out, or if this council even agrees. But that's just a right. Without getting on the soapbox here, I just feel as an American citizen, I just have a right to say, "No, you can't come into my home." And I know that says that, but I don't even want you at my front door telling me you're going to come into my home. You can call me and ask, but I don't know if that can be reworded or or what. But that, that whole right of entry, right of entry, it just seems to walk all over my rights.
Mr. Steinbeck?
Well, and I guess, taking the first paragraph without, or taking the first sentence without the second certainly would give you that indication. Although, the language there is also to establish that we're not going to do so at 4:00 in the morning. We're not going to do so...
Reasonable times.
Right. So we're going to do so during normal business hours. We will further, as it indicates there, carry identification, state our purpose for being there. And you, as a property owner, do have every right to say no, as it says in, you know, in that second sentence. If we get to that standpoint, then the burden falls to my staff and myself that we have to be able to go into court and show probable cause by which we can obtain an administrative search warrant to conduct that inspection. And when we do that, we do prepare a case to go before a judge or magistrate, just as the police department and everybody else does, to indicate these are the things we see that we see from the outside that are not, you know, that are not an invasion of the privacy, that we can see from the public property or from from a visual observation. And based on that, here's the things that we're going to look at. So the same burden, constitutional burden that's placed on the police department regarding their search warrants is also placed upon my staff in doing so. I would probably say...
And I know that, I know that's kind of what it says, I just kind of wish it was just, if we feel like if the city needs to go in, they'll ask permission, and if permission's not given, then they'll go get a search warrant. I mean, just the way it sounds, it's, the wording bothers me. Let's move it, 304.18.1. I will go right through these, I know we've taken a lot of time. But this is a big document, and it affects everybody that lives in this city. And I think, you know, we adopt these things because it's in place, and other cities do it, and all of that. But I've never quite been a follower. And just because somebody else does it, doesn't mean it's right. 304.18.1. Let me find it myself.
103, page 103.
Point 18.1, okay. The deadbolt, that's what's on... Does this mean, help me understand this, doors? Does every door now that goes from the outside have to have a deadbolt? It says that, and I might be reading it wrong. There's rent, at least, or... Okay, doors providing access to a dwelling unit, rooming unit, I mean, it means everything, shall be equipped with a deadbolt lock. So does that mean that every door, every front door in the City of Troy needs a deadbolt? Did I read that right?
Yeah, although I think the definition of a deadbolt might be different than, than the definition that you may be...
I'm thinking that top thing that you click.
I understand.
Well, it even says it here that such deadbolt locks shall be installed for the purpose... And then a sliding bolt shall not be considered an acceptable deadbolt.
Yeah, sliding bolt is a surface-mounted...
Right, I know what that is, but I... So can you call it just a knob that has a lock in it, a deadbolt? That's not what the stores call it. Stores call deadbolt that thing that goes on the top.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I'd have to do some research on that to address that question to you.
I'm just saying, I just think that's a bit...
And I will tell you, that is...
Over the top.
The provisions of that section that prohibit the use of a key special effort or special knowledge to operate the door are current language. The specific, the specific language with regard to the deadbolt, I believe, is new language that was added, and I can go back through the code change documents to see what the justification and the explanation for that was.
I would appreciate. 305.3, just a little bit farther down, 305.3 Interior Surface. It talks about interior surfaces of a person's home, including windows, doors, shall be maintained good, clean, sanitary condition. Peeling, chipping, flaking, or braided paint shall be repaired, removed, or covered. Cracked or loose plaster, decayed wood, and other defective surfaces' condition shall be corrected. The piece I have a problem with, I understand if it's decayed wood, defective, you know, for health and safety, because that's what all this is all about. But the peeling, chipping, flaking? Peeling and chipping? That I'd like to, I have a problem with that, I'd like to see that omitted. Things peel and chip. I mean, doors, you know, you get a wood door and a little bit of the veneer starts coming off. And again, I know that you cannot possibly dot every i and cross every t, and so you have a trained professional person doing this, I get that. But I, I think when we focus on the mission here of this maintenance code, which should be for health and safety issues, whether I have a door that has, is peeling a little bit, it's one thing if it's decayed wood down here at the bottom. But it's talking about peeling or chipping or flaking, that doesn't send a message to me that my health or my safety is an issue here.
Yes, Councilwoman Brumfield, do you want to answer?
No, I don't want to answer, I just want to disagree and say I think it needs to be left in. I go back to my 30's bungalow with lead in the paint.
Right, I think that's the reason...
And therefore, the only way we can require this to be maintained in safe condition is to put it in here. And again, I go back to the inspector can say, "Oh, that's latex, I understand." And it's not, you know, something your kids are going to eat. But if you've got lead paint, I want it he or she to say, "Get rid of it, cover it up, paint over it, go buy a dollar gallon of mismatched paint and paint over it."
Is that the reason why I've been there? Is that the reason why I've been there? Mr. Steinbeck?
Kids don't eat it?
Well, yeah, in part. And remember, we are talking about older structures, probably prior to 1979, where lead-based paint was predominantly used. And the interior surfaces, if peeling and chipping paint is left unattended, certainly can be hazardous to any young members of the household, as well as just.
Well, that makes sense. Thank you, Councilwoman Beltzmein. I guess what I'm seeing here, and of course, we can, I don't think I make a habit of micromanaging in the past, and it may appear that a couple of us are trying to do that. This is a huge document, and I think we just need to take some time and read through it. And, you know, the question not answered is the dumb question. I mean, the question not asked. You should ask questions because then you feel better about what's going on. And thank you very much. I think, you want to make a comment?
Is anybody else?
The city manager, I think.
Mr. Zerlach?
I'm just wondering if there'd be a better zone of comfort among the governing body if you had all indicated your questions to Mark and Brian and Lori and myself. And we could then arrange, if you like, a regular study item on this matter to discuss it, and have you get that zone of comfort. And I just wanted to make that offer, or you could hammer it out.
I would appreciate that myself. I'm just one of seven, and two aren't here. And so, I mean, I would appreciate it because I think we're taking up a lot of time tonight. And there are some things that I would like Mr. Steinbeck to look at, like the definition of the deadbolt and all of that, before we vote on this tonight. So we can't do it tonight, so postponing it and taking a little bit more time to go through this.
Madam Mayor? Councilwoman Kerwin?
I'm wondering on the deadbolt issue if that's something, in fact, that could be found, with, we have some other business to be done, if that could be found within the next, so that we.
I can certainly make that attempt. I do not know whether I will be able to come up with the text documents. I also have a commentary that goes along with this, and look at that issue.
Mayor? We have two, I was thinking, what other business is on here? We have another E, Resolution E7, we have all of the F items, and a resolution about the possession of a 22nd deal. So there is some time while we deal with the other issues, if you wanted to research those, and then we can.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman?
The idea of looking at this and spend a little bit more time, and we're missing two council people this evening. And in the past, I know Councilwoman Kerwin has requested some additional time on something that was long and laborious. I would ask for an indulgence on this council to consider looking at this, not while we're still talking about something else, but having some time to really go through it with a fine-tooth comb and have some questions, and just feel good about this 47-page document that we're getting ready to vote on. If we could get some time, we've got two people missing tonight. No doubt, they may come back with some questions and reconsider it anyway. I mean, I'm not speaking for them, but I just think that we need some time here.
Were the answers to the questions that were asked this evening not sufficient to satisfy what was there? I know you had the one on the deadbolts, you had some others.
I got two main ones. One's my 45 days option for us to, for appeal, and then I'd also like to see the 1966 and 1939.
We got unlimited time to appeal.
If we switch weather, yeah, that's fine, if we agree with that.
Right.
Assuming that is section. I really want to have a better understanding of these, the room area and the access. And we haven't talked about this a lot, and if anyone on TV is watching, and they have a bedroom that leads into the bedrooms, and it's in Troy, I'd like to hear about it. Just so we know how much of a nonconformance this is, or how many houses would be made illegal that aren't aware that it will be.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Because it's current, right?
I'm sorry.
That's current.
That's current.
Right now. So we're not making anything illegal. What we're doing is simply grouping it into this. Right?
It's limited enforcement, though. I mean, it's a separate document.
Madam Mayor?
More qualified.
It's still going to be limited by the number of staff we have, by the number of requests. I understand the alarm that all of a sudden tomorrow, we're going to be sending out armies of people to check chipped paint. But in reality, that isn't it. But when it comes to health, safety, and welfare, that is a huge concern. And this isn't new to us. Shame on us if we hadn't looked at that document to begin with. Some of us have.
I submitted 30 pages, a lot of stuff, and I appreciate the stuff that we've already worked through. There's a few items that are open.
Councilwoman Beltzmein?
I appreciate the work that everybody's put into this. Quite honestly, we've had this document for a month.
Yes.
And so, that's where my frustration is in all of this. We have had this document for a month. We've studied this document for a month, and if we haven't, and if we didn't find time to sit down with staff and get our questions answered, I'm not sure that another two weeks is going to help. And that's my frustration, because we can't be guaranteed that on the 6th of July, when Wade and Martin come back, we're not going to play this all over again. And not, most of, this is not new stuff. I'm delighted that if I rent a building or a space in Troy, it has to have a deadbolt on it. My home doesn't. But if I rent a space in Troy, it has to have a deadbolt on it. I'm delighted with that. I'm not upset about that at all. The inspectors have great discretion in this, and I think that if we don't use weather as our only condition, where we can say, the appeal can go longer, most of this is existing language. Most of this is either our own, or told that what we have to enforce, I mean, how many times has Mr. Steinbeck said to me, "The code's the code," so it's what we have to enforce from some other bodies? So to put this off, I'm willing to do that, only if you can guarantee me that we're not going to do this again when two guys come back, because we've had it for a month. We all could've, should've, and did, in theory, get our questions out. So here we are, sitting here at 10:30 at night, after four and a half weeks of having this. That's my frustration.
My frustration is that sometimes, even though we have four weeks, we also have families, 13 grandchildren, buying a house, painting, you know what? I do look at stuff, but there are a few occasions, and mind you, only a few times, when I asked for postponements in seven and a half years. And maybe I didn't get to this like I should've, and I certainly can't guarantee that these other two gentlemen that are missing this evening won't do the same. I can't guarantee, I don't know what they're going to do. And if you don't want to postpone it, don't postpone it, that's fine. I'm just, I just have a request, that's all.
Mr. Zerlach?
Just want to mention that, from a city management perspective, when it's time to enforce an ordinance, our job is easier if all the governing body votes away the same way on an issue. And again, I can understand and appreciate every comment that was made, but if it would help get more cohesiveness on passing a document that's essentially been in effect for decades, I would recommend that you delay this so that there can be questions asked. We have two members absent. We'll contact Mr. Fleming and Mr. Howrillack directly, see if they have any questions, meet with them ahead of time if we need to. We'll have the clerk identify all the questions that were asked this evening on a per-section basis, indicate the ramifications. Question that I have is that every policy has strategic and tactical elements to it. And it's one thing to talk about the tactical elements, you know, chipped paint, deadbolts unlocked, overcrowding conditions. But it's also very important to strategically agree as to what we're doing. And by having the building department go in and having the discretion to make decisions, as long as they are having the public health and safety as their premise, and as long as there is an option to appeal, which I think ultimately comes markware on an appeal.
Officially, there's three different levels of appeal. They can appeal the decision to me of my staff member.
Yes.
They can appeal that decision to the Building Code of Appeals. They can then appeal that decision to the Construction Code Commission of the State of Michigan, and ultimately, they can appeal that to certain court.
Okay. Could there be any appeal to the city council? I noticed there's one.
Other than the dangerous structure, there's not an appeal process to the city council that I'm aware of.
Okay. But the ultimate appeal process could be that if the council doesn't like Section 305.3, they can expunge it, right?
That certainly is their program.
So there's really that level of appeal as well strategically. And you might want to keep that in mind when you're talking about certain things that may appear nebulous at this point. Again, the outcome is to have a healthy community, not to knock on doors to say, "We're going to come in tomorrow," unless, and then they'll say, "No, search warrant to check on chipped paint, we're not going to do that." But I can understand strategically where you need to get comfortable in how you want us to act. But also, please bear in mind that even though you're only in the appeal process on the hit for demolition of a structure, which is the largest issue, if you really feel strongly about an item, you can expunge it from the code. And what we can do is indicate through reports and communications how we are, you know, to give you a track record of what our enforcement activities are. And we also have the basic philosophy of compliance before conviction.
I think that one thing, we've had a lot of discussion of detail of this tonight, but the thing that is important is that we've always had standards for the code for property maintenance, or dangerous buildings, or nuisance, et cetera. And this is simply an upgrading of that based on the fact that we have the new, we've got the bulk of codes, correct, Mr. Steinbeck?
Officially, I notice the ICC codes.
ICC now, yes. And so, I know that council members do have questions about certain sections of it. However, I think it's important to have the codes in place. I would have hoped that if council member Fleming or Howrillack knew that they weren't going to be here this evening, and they had questions, they would have relayed that to staff, saying, "I've got some questions, there's a couple of things on that. Can you delay this particular item?" They, I don't know, I didn't speak to them. Mr. Zerlach spoke to both of the people on this, but did they ask to have this item delayed? And we've had this for a month when it came forward, and Mr. Councilman Eisenbacher had a lot of questions and did contact about those. So I feel that there has been time to ask those and at least get clarification on everything.
Mayor?
Mr. Zerlach, did either member ask to have an item delayed from the agenda?
Neither member asked to have any items delayed.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Eisenbacher?
I would be blunt. I think that's a very unfair statement, considering that Councilman Fleming is out of town due to a death in the family.
Yes, I know of that. I know where he is.
That's, it's just not fair, because when there's a death in the family, he's not worried about going through his council homework. I mean, that's not, that's not fair. I also didn't ask any member if they wanted to have an item delayed.
Right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Kerwin?
I think that removing the weather is a, removing the weather, striking weather, I think is good. I also wanted to point out that in addition to having the same language, that where language was changed, it seems to be more permissive than it was before. More permissive, giving more opportunity, and we pointed out in a couple of sections on that. On the right of entry, I guess for the attorney, city attorney, doesn't it include, well, perhaps you'd like to comment on that, constitutional rights in full?
It is subject to constitutional rights, so, you know, certainly, we do have requirements. We cannot enter into a home if there is not consent. You know, that language is in there, and there is a change to that section as well, but previously, it just indicated constitutional, and at the suggestion of council member Eisenbacher, we had added the word "and legal."
Legal rights and constitution.
To that as well.
And just to follow up, without that kind of right of entry, literally, everybody could say no. You know, they've been called for something, and here comes the code of enforcer, and, "No, I don't want you ever to come in," and that kind of ends that there. So there has to be some sort of.
It clarifies who it is that can go into homes. Without that, it's not clear that the person could enter into the homes. Now, certainly, there is an element of consent that has to be there, and if there is not consent, that section is what gives us the authority to go to a court and to get a warrant, because they have the responsibility to enforce the code.
And Mr. Steinbeck made the point that that would be the same for a police officer or for a fire.
Correct.
Councilwoman Beltzmein?
In that, for the attorney, if I may, ma'am. In that section, and I understand Councilwoman Brumfield's knee-jerk, certainly, because I had it the first time I read it, and then I kind of took a deep breath, but it starts out, you know, that the code inspector is authorized. Excuse me very much, I own my house. Am I not the person who can authorize people to come in and out? And that's kind of how it hits. So I'm just talking to the wording. And so, I guess my question for you is, for that to be legal, for the code inspector to do his or her job, does authorize have to be used? Is there something softer, can, whatever, something more common and less legal?
If council decides to not act on this tonight, certainly, that will be one of the things that we will look at and see if we can, you know, revisit that language and maybe make some modifications. I will tell you, however, that we do need to have something in there that does provide for the ability to later on go and seek a warrant when it is necessary.
I mean, it's the authorized, which is such a legal word that I think empowers someone other than the property owner when you first read it. I, again, we've had this for a month, and it's my knee-jerk to say.
Let me ask a question that may help a little bit. Don't we have something on the schedule, on the manager's search, that, July 6? Do you have that scheduled with you?
We do have a 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. meeting set for July 6, yes, before the council.
Okay, so we have that, and we were supposed to have a shortened agenda then for that evening because of the time slot. Okay, thank you. That whole meeting, that whole week of July 6, we meet every single day except Friday at 10:00, so I think it's better that we deal with this issue frankly, but I know some people have questions.
Let the people who have questions see if they can get answers then.
Yep. So.
Councilman Eisenbacher?
I'd like to make a resolution to postpone action until.
July 6?
July 6, yes.
Do we have support?
Support.
Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Brumfield, that we postpone this item to July 6. Discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltzmein?
I will tell you, I still think that's the wrong thing to do. But I also believe that every now and then, I want to infullly admit that I didn't get to something when I should've, or whatever. And I often say to people, "Nothing on these agendas, can't wait two weeks, the town is not going to fall apart." It is my sense that we could pass this tonight, as it were. The votes are here to do that. That does two things. It puts an ordinance in place from a positive vote from a minority of council, which I think is a bad way to govern. which I think is a bad way to govern. And secondly, it says to your colleagues that you don't think that their questions are important enough to be answered. So although I don't want to postpone this, I think it's the right thing for us to do tonight. So...
In your honor, if I may, to clarify my earlier answer, I was thinking about Mr. Fleming. We didn't talk to each other in real time. We exchanged voicemails. I believe he indicated to me that he was leaving Mississippi before the agenda even went out last Thursday.
I didn't raise that to be unkind to the other council members. I just indicate that some of the other things that we had on our agendas coming up, and if council wants to postpone until the 6th, fine. And those council members that are here that have questions could get, with staff, get answers so we could expedite it as much as possible for the 6th. We perhaps could move through it more quickly. But we do have that other meeting beforehand than this. So that, I was just letting you know that that's how the schedules goes.
Madam Mayor.
And I don't think...
Councilman Kerwin?
Not trying to pick on anybody at this table. We're just saying that this had been before us as an item for a long period of time. Here's a question that I have for my colleagues. Will fundamentally, at the end of the day, even when these things are addressed, because sometimes that happens, we address the issues and at the end of the day, it's still like, "No, I don't like it anyhow." Are we really doing that?
Mayor, if I may?
Councilman Eisenbacher?
Um, no, I, that's the quick answer. I think this is a huge move forward to combine all these chapters. Because we had huge, I mean, there is conflicting sections with our trash code, with our litter code. Getting it all together in one chapter so that it's easier for our residents to know what they have to comply with and to comply with it. It'll help our enforcement. I mean, everything about it is wonderful, except for my few concerns, in my opinion.
And I, excuse me, Madam Mayor. I just was trying to understand that because we've done that before. You know, we're, "Oh, we'll postpone it and we come back." And still, it ends up being hitting horns. And I just don't want to go there. So in, I certainly understand we want to postpone and think about it and get the deadbolt's questions and all of those, anything else. And I certainly appreciate seeing all those questions ahead of time so when we can come, we can kind of move on this. But Madam Mayor is exactly right. July 6th, we're going to have a lot of stuff, a lot of pressure. And we're going to need to really try to resolve some of this stuff ahead of time. Thank you.
Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote on the postponement?
Councilmember Broomfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell, to me?
Yes.
Motion passes. On the table, we have E7, which is Budget Amendment Number 3. Do we have someone move that? It's attached to the E7 City Council Action Report. It eliminates all the items that are in there.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Bell, to me.
Resolve, City Council, the Troy City Council hereby approves the 2008, 2009 Budget Amendment Number 3. As submitted, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Bell, to me, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as laid on the table and read. Discussion? The vote, Mr. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell, to me?
Yes.
Broomfield?
Yes.
Motion passes. The resolution about the closed session for June 22nd will come up under L1. I just, because it was part of all those yellow papers, I thought I'd tell you that. F items, we have no items requested. Does council have any they want exempted?
Mayor.
Councilman Eisenbacher?
I just wanted a very brief discussion of F4A.
F4A?
Yes.
Okay.
No holdup.
Any others?
Yep.
Okay. Would you move a resolution to...
Yes.
Go ahead.
That all items as presented on the consent agenda are hereby approved as presented with the exception of item F4A and...
The corrected minutes.
Corrected minutes, which shall be considered after consent agenda F items as presented.
Second, do we have second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Broomfield that we approve the consent agenda items except F4A shall be considered after the consent agenda. And the councilman is corrected. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell, to me?
Yes.
Broomfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Motion passes. Councilman Eisenbacher, F4A.
Yes, the reason this one jumped out at me is because of the prior item we had at the start of the meeting where we had the waterline project. And it came in substantially under budget because of the, what I call the hunger, the hunger of the contractors for work. And personally, when I first glanced at this, it jumped out at me as the same that I read through all the details that staff provided about the contract and their survey of the contractors. Hopefully, any of these capital projects, we could calibrate a little bit more because I think we could have maybe done better just based on the concrete market and the installers and what we saw on the waterline project. That said, I will move the resolution as printed.
Second.
Do we have second? Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Bell, to me, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell, to me?
Yes.
Broomfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mrs. Blum, clarify for me. Why would we do this resolution about the closed session for the 22nd after we do the study session?
It's not after the study session. What it is, Mayor, is that we have called a meeting in a previous resolution, and it was from 5:00 to 7:00. So if, if the decisions cannot be made by 7:00 p.m., then we would need to have the next council meeting where we would call another session or we'd have to call a special meeting. So this is just in case it does go beyond the two-hour time slot.
But my question is, when do I call on someone to move this resolution? Don't I do it now before we go to council comments?
This is an L item?
Well, it says L, but L would be after our study item. That doesn't make sense to me.
That's true.
Should be before the study item. So Mrs. Bartholomew, when do I bring it up?
It probably should have been as a main item and we should take it up at this time.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to do then. Okay, would somebody move this resolution, please, that's on the table? That gives us more time if we need to go past 7:00?
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, Mayor.
Councilman Eisenbacher?
Resolve the Troy City Council...
I don't think we need to, no, no, that's not it. It's this one.
No, it's this one.
Where is City Council?
Okay.
We don't need to read it, just move it.
Well, yeah, we do.
No, I think we should read it.
Okay, go ahead.
Because it was laid on the table?
Go ahead.
Whereas City Council after received proposals from executive search candidates for the Troy City Council, City Manager position, whereas a closed session has been scheduled for July 22nd, 2009, from 7:00, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., whereas the length of time to review the proposals may exceed two hours, and whereas there is no City Council meeting scheduled for June 22nd, 2009 that would start at 7:30 p.m. and therefore, no end time restriction, now therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council hereby schedules a closed City Council meeting as outlined below. Monday, June 22nd, 2009, at 7:00 p.m. in the council boardroom of Troy City Hall, 500 West Big Beaver, Troy, Michigan, 48084, for the purpose of meeting in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268F and MCL 15.268H, MCL 15.243E and K, to review material and deliberate and/or select finalists to be scheduled for interviews.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by...
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Kerwin?
A question for the city clerk. Would this require us to suspend rules?
Actually, we should suspend the rules. And we can do that by postponing this until the completion of the suspension of the rules or make an amendment to suspend the rules as part of this. But in order for us to put it in the minutes and assign it a proper number and follow procedure, we really should suspend the rules.
So because it hasn't been seconded yet, we can just take it off the table for a minute, do, suspend the rules and then go to it, okay?
Sure.
So can you have a motion to suspend the rules?
I move that we suspend the rules at this time.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Broomfield that we suspend the rules at this time. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Bell, to me?
Yes.
Broomfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Now the resolution is moved by Councilwoman Bell, to me, and read and seconded by Councilwoman Broomfield. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Broomfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bell, to me?
Yes.
Thank you for catching that. All right, now, we'll go to council comments. And then we have our study session item. Any council comments? Okay, then we'll stand in recess, go to our study session, and come back. What, what are you holding up? Study session for the items that we may or may not want to have go on the ballot and this is to talk about it, but it will actually come to council for a vote in a resolution. And does this mean these items will not go to charter revision because there isn't time? Charter revision committee? Is that right?
They were going to go to charter revision.
Oh, they are going to go.
That is, that is an option that you do have.
Okay.
There's time. There is enough time, yes.
Okay, that's what I had to find out, okay. All right, where do we want to start?
How about?
The one that's been in charter revision forever?
How about an easier one? Maybe?
Why don't you just start on the first?
One, one.
Put it on the list.
Number one, I think, will be increasing the time of acting city manager concern. It's right here, number one.
Indemned.
Indemned, all right, okay. Do we want to give that person longer than 120 days or not?
Yes, I think so.
Absolutely.
Keeps pushing us up like it's not that we're going to happen.
It won't affect anything until?
The next city manager. We understand that, but I think it was a good, it was a point, I think, who made it? Who made the point about why that was originally? Was it John?
Yeah.
It was a long time ago.
And that's when so much of the city was dependent on this one person?
Yes, so essentially it was a city manager, a police chief, a city clerk, and a dog catcher. And when the manager left, there wasn't too many professionals to step in. Now, especially with management, a town can go for more than four months without a board meeting.
So, do we need a time span to put in that plot? We do. How much like that to be?
Is there anything governed by the state or anything that we have to comply? I will tell you, I know, like, right now, the city of Grand Rapids has been doing their search for a very long time. They do not have a similar provision in their charter. So, they've had an acting city manager for a much longer period. I think it's.
Can we just remove this?
Can we remove? Yeah, and it was actually amended in 1976, April 5th of 1976, and actually, it was.
Sixty?
Yeah, from now, it was ninety now, and then it moved it to 140 days.
Ninety days.
They really were in a hurry back then.
Limited total of professionals until seventy-six too, though. It's true. That's true. Is there some merit in having it so that you don't have, in essence, a permanent acting kind of situation?
You do that in churches.
Yeah.
You got an interim pastor for five years.
Well, and you got, you know.
Room is right here.
Okay, so we should have it.
Superintendent. So, I'm thinking that to remove it altogether may not be prudent.
I think six months is reasonable.
Hundred and eighty days? Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, because, you know, the whole thing is, when you have too long of a time, you never make any decisions. I think it's better to have a time limit to make a decision.
May I, I will just also share with you, in speaking with Ms. Sims from Waters Consulting Group, she was not concerned about the hundred and twenty days. I mean, certainly, it's requiring them to expedite everything, but she did mention a couple of things which are worthy of consideration. One thing is that you're getting your candidates because it's a shorter timeframe, so, you know, that is a benefit to a lot of your candidates. You're getting the top tier candidates in a lot of situations. So, she did mention that and I guess that's really the prominent thing. She was not concerned about it, first of all, and second of all, she thought that that was a benefit that we have that other cities where she's doing this search did not have.
That they knew they have an up or down within a certain period of time.
Right, exactly. There was some stability for the candidates as well.
And that's what I'm saying, it makes you make, forces you to make a decision.
Yeah, I don't disagree. The thing I don't like is, especially the last two times we've done the vote, it's like from the get-go, we're, we're, we talk like we're in this huge hurry and the timeline, and pretty soon the timeline starts controlling the process versus us controlling the process. And so, you know, if we're going to change it to something, we need to change it other than one twenty because, oh, well, timeline, oh, well, we have to have a meeting with two people missing from council because, you know, we're on this timeline. And I just think there needs to be enough padding there that we're comfortable with what we're doing, not feeling anxious.
And I agree. I know for superintendent searches, sometimes that moment, you don't find the right person. And so, there's no timeline with that. And it's not the idea that we'll serve forever with our deputy or with our interim, but it's the idea that on this search, on this go-round, magic did not happen. So, there's that ability to have someone running the ship, but go back out and try to find that other person. So, there's nothing that's governing that. I think whether you were doing a hundred and twenty or whether you did it to a hundred and eighty, I think you still might not find that fit, and yet, that arbitrary number is determining the person you hire, when really, it should be those elected officials that say, "This is not going to work." We just experienced something where the magic, you know, although the timeline was met, perfection was not.
Councilwoman Beltrameini?
Well, no, I was doing, I, I, you triggered something in my head when you said that, Mary, because higher ed has a mechanism that they call a failed search, where, you know, the timeline starts and they go through that process for whatever day or semester or quarter or whatever they're allowed. And there are certain checkmarks that have to be made, and if it is a failed search, then it's kind of like Mark said, well, we would have to make a finding. They have a finding of a failed search, which allows it to start all over again. But they, that timeline is still in place for them. So, that might be another sort of mechanism, would be adding a paragraph that said, you know, if you used a, if you, you know, went out for a real search. And the companies that you hired to do this, if you don't, it's not like you have to go out and pay them again. If they bring everybody in, nothing works, and you need to go through the process again. They, it's, you know, okay, they're still, that's what they agreed to do. She is sitting there.
I think though.
I like the.
Oh, go ahead. I just think that when, if it is sent to the voters, it sounds like it's going to, it should be a very simple resolution. So, we shouldn't complicate it with too many other things.
Deadlines are good.
I think so.
Because you can, if you have a deadline.
Opportunity to fill maybe.
Yeah, if you have a deadline and then you don't meet, you can always keep the person that you have as acting as the city manager while you're still, okay, there are provisions for doing that.
I, you know, but I don't like that, I'm not comfortable with that. I think it would far better to really make a standard that we can live with rather than trying to move around. I mean, I think that's where we are now. I think that hundred and twenty has backed us up. Is there a perfect day to put in there? I'm not, I'm not sure.
Well, a hundred and twenty.
And I don't want to put in failed search.
No, I'm comfortable with a hundred and twenty days. I really am. I am comfortable with a hundred and twenty days. I think we botched the process this time.
Yeah.
And we need to take responsibility for that.
But if we change it to a hundred and eighty, that does give us, that does give more time the next time that this is.
Does anybody know how many municipalities have language like this? I was just, was interested. Nobody looked into their charters?
Do you know other municipalities that they don't have or need charts?
I don't know. Don't know the answer.
Well, you lose.
I know.
I just don't strike it. I don't, I don't feel that there's a deadline. If, if there's no manager, it's incumbent upon us as one of our roles to, I mean, that's what we, what we do, hire and evaluate. That's a fundamental role.
I think there needs to be a deadline.
See, I think there needs to be a deadline too, and I think that the people who set up the original charter were very wise in setting some kind of a deadline, and of course, they had it even shorter because of their circumstance. I'm not big on changing charters a lot.
I hear that.
I would go with a hundred and eighty days, but that's where I stand.
But I add another month.
Pardon?
Two months.
Two months.
Six months, yeah, six months.
Yeah.
Well, see, when you come into seasons, like summer, you know, when you got four months, well, first you hear about it, and then you got a big company, and then that waits two, three weeks, like you're doing in the summer. If you do six months, you've got one good season going there. Or two.
It could fall in the middle of the year, too.
You know, you're closed out, you just can't remove the snow, yeah.
Okay. Are you comfortable with a hundred and eighty days, David?
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
It's only the charter revision, they may not want to.
We can send in charter revision with a hundred and eighty days in it. How about if we do that?
That's simple.
Okay, see what they say, all right?
They need to say somehow that it won't apply to this sort of process.
It can, it can. It can.
I know, I know.
It's not until November.
It's not until November.
Informational.
Well.
We just have to make it clear that it doesn't apply now.
This search will be done.
Yeah, it'll be done.
It'll be done.
It'll be done, so it'll be a moot point.
That's our experience on the ballot. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, like I said, I'm comfortable with a hundred and twenty days, but.
All right, okay.
No, this is an easy one.
Okay, let's go to the next one. Annual term of the mayor pro temp. It had always been, well, one year, one year, one year, one year.
Right.
And then we went to two-year elections.
Right.
And I think this, you brought this one up, Mary, that we should do it one year to give more people a chance to do it. So, you want to do that?
Yeah.
You want to do that?
One year.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's better one year. One day, I was mayor pro temp.
Okay. Now, does that have to go to charter revision also?
Yeah.
Just to get their opinion, okay. All right, I'm just asking.
John Momo-Rada gave me my little.
All right, okay, that one's done. Okay, now, the tough one. Election a mayor by the council in a manner other than directly by the electorate. You saw the memo from, where is it?
Oh, it's just on that, I think.
No, but there was a memo that said.
Well, that they're talking about how the things have to change.
That, yeah, that, that would mean that people could have council terms, three council terms, and then that's it, because there would be no mayor seat.
Right.
So, you couldn't have three plus, three terms plus two as mayor.
But, you know, we increased the number of years served because of the whole change.
Right.
It used to be only three years, and now it's four years.
Right.
So, we've already increased the number.
Okay.
So. The years, I would say, the years.
The years.
So, I don't know that that's an issue so much, because you're still serving upward to twelve years.
Okay. The other point that was made is that cities that had that, where they rotated who was mayor for a year, changed it to having it elected by the electorate general. When they changed, so, where did we get that information?
From, from.
Consider package.
I know, but we got that somewhere. Robyn mentioned that, but I think it was also, so, how do people feel about that one? And it won't go into effect till 2011 anyway.
Right.
Because you can't take away from.
Right. I'd say just leave it the way it is. Let the people decide, and I don't think you want to shorten any experience that someone could have, which would be a benefit. You'd lose that. I brought this up, and I've brought it up a couple of times, because I think that our elections often fall into politics, not elections so much, and I'm as guilty as anybody. And when you remove the mayoral as an elective office and it becomes something that is like the mayor pro temp, then when campaigns come around, people are running for the council seat, they're not running for mayor. And I, I just think it takes, it helps on that whole political stuff that goes on during campaigns when you don't have a mayoral election. When, when we serve and we each take terms, I mean, whoever's on council, and if they don't want to, there's some people that don't have the time to cut the ribbon or do the different things, that's okay. They, if you don't want to be mayor pro temp, you can pass it, because you know, I don't want to. It also allows for shared, while the mayor has just one vote, just like the rest of the council, she or he still runs the meetings. And when you take those turns among the seven, there isn't, for four years, one opinion that kind of dominates because they're facilitating a meeting. That's what council like ours, what happens is everybody gets terms that wants it, and so then you have that opportunity not to, you know, like there's mayoral appointments. And this isn't, I'm not directing this to anybody, but if a mayor comes on and they're served and they're elected a couple of terms and they have the mayoral appointments, well, for eight years, they pretty much bring the people forward that maybe the other council members aren't in agreement with, but if you're taking terms, then every time that shifts, then the mayoral appointments are different. And so, you get a better blend versus all one thing going. And it is the political issue. I'm going to be transparent here, it is the political issue. It's not anything but that. I mean, you've got seven people, seven different opinions, and you're putting one of those opinions, facilitating the meeting each time you make that appointment, versus the whole other side of it.
The other thing we need to discuss is how it would occur, because when we do mayor pro temp, we rotate it based on, you know, when you're elected. You could do it that way. In some cities, they do it with the highest vote getter.
I think it should be the.
And becomes the.
The rotation. Because the highest vote getter lends itself to.
I know, well, I'm bringing it up just because we're going to discuss all the.
If you've got four, three, then the fours are going to put their person in, and not the three in.
Right.
So, this, if it's just based on the rotation, then you have that opportunity to always be having those changes and those, facilitating it. I just think it makes for better coverage.
I don't know that you always have those opportunities, though, Kristina, because still, it's going to take a vote from the table. So, let's say, you know, you look at now, and let's say this council is four, three. Really, there's only the opportunity for the four, who have the majority of votes, to ever get mayor. Whereas if it's, if it's a true race out there for the people to decide, it's the people who put that person in power.
Well, we could make the, we could ask people to decide this. They may vote again. If not have that opportunity to, I mean, this would be a charter amendment, and you ask the people to vote. Do you want to still elect your mayor, or do you want?
I'm just trying to understand.
Or, or they'd rotate it, I mean, just like-
Well, that's, I'm talking about rotating it.
Yeah.
I'm not talking about what you said. I'm talking about rotating it through the seven.
Is this an amendment that should come from us? I mean, really, is this an amendment that should come from us, or should this be something that comes from the people of Troy, rather than us saying, as a governing body, we find it difficult to work with the mayor? I mean, but that is the perception. That is the perception, is we've been sitting here for five, eight, ten years, whatever, under a mayor elected separately, that we don't always agree with, and therefore let us elect our own mayor, because it will be easier-
When you're not elected, you rotate it.
No, we rotate it.
Still an election. And it's, it's an election that's not always, I mean, the, the rotation for mayor pro town, and I don't want to point it out here, but the rotation for mayor pro town is inconsistent. So-
Why is it inconsistent?
Because, like I say, that's a whole nother discussion. It's inconsistent. So I, I just, I don't, the people of Troy don't mind electing their own mayor. So until the people of Troy say that they don't want to elect their own mayor, I'm not sure this is a charter amendment I want to send to the charter revision committee. I mean, that's just kind of where I am.
That's what you were saying, it's not political.
The people of Troy didn't say to us, we need a hundred and eighty days for-
We have found, we've found ourselves in that situation, though.
That's the same thing. We've found ourselves-
We are directly responsible for the hiring and evaluating. That's one of the fundamental roles.
So we're the ones who control, that actually-
Not the ones that are us.
This isn't. This is the people's decision.
This is our way, it's always been. There's not been an, I mean, you're not going to get a group of people to go out and collect, how many signatures do they have to collect to get it on the, for something like this? It's, it's not a passionate thing. This is about good governance. This is about what works and what doesn't work. And this is a, a recommendation that can be voted down. It's easier for the people of Troy to vote and say, no, we want to elect our own mayor, and vote this down, than it is to say, we're not going to do anything, we're just going to wait till you go out and collect three thousand signatures to get it on the ballot.
They don't have to do that. I mean, literally, if ten people came and sent an email and said, we think it's a good idea for the charter revision committee to consider amending the charter to elect the mayor by the council, I'd probably send it to the charter revision committee. But when the five people I've heard from are all present or past members of council, I find that a little disingenuous, that's all.
You know, see, I, I take issue with you saying disingenuous, because I think this is just not disingenuous. This is about, I'm sitting here, and there are people at this table I don't agree with, but I'm saying to you, but I, I want you to be a mayor for a year. I want you to be a mayor for a year. You've already been mayor, so you can't be- I, I, that is not disingenuous. Disingenuous is if I'm trying to massage it, manipulate it, and make it benefit me. This isn't about benefiting me. This is about standing back and saying what works. And what works is seven people, each having opportunity to run the meetings, facilitate them, bringing mayoral recommendations for some of the committees, instead of one person having eight years, and there's been people before you, Louise, I'm not just talking about you, you know, having that, that for eight years, you know, no, you got, for eight years, you got eight different people doing it, from both sides of the table. That's, that's about as fair and as democratic as you can get. And I think that it takes away the whole puff-up, you know, like, well, I want to be mayor, or I want to be ma-, it takes that away, and it brings us together as a team more, because we're each serving at the same capacity versus, I was elected mayor, so I'm the head honcho.
It still would take four votes, though. You still end up with that.
I know that, but-
Because, like, we have boards and commissions, and then they have their organizational meeting, and they choose a chair and a vice chair. So again, when you're trying to get away from politics, it still takes four votes, so you can still have someone saying, gee, I really want to have that job, and it's still, like, not you.
No.
But the interest, the interest is, the interest is, is to work together better.
You're missing it. We're not voting the mayor. We're voting-
Well, how is this person suddenly going to be the mayor, then?
You're not mayor pro temp, you rotated. Everybody gets a chance.
We can work on the rotation to make it more equitable. I mean, but imagine it's, it's in an order, and you share it, as opposed to being a single person.
You don't vote on the mayor.
Well, you have to vote. You have to vote to a point, and, and, and I, I, I understand all of that, and, so that's good. But Mary's point is, well, it could all go south, too, if somebody said, yeah, it's your turn, but not so much.
And I'm in for four years, and she either wanted it this year because I'm in-
You put it in the charter, and you can't.
Yeah, it's, it's rotation in the charter. You can't-
Rotation under a criteria.
Rotation under a-
Because the other thing is, you could, okay, case in point, you could have it governed as the top vote getter, and you might have a longer standing mayor than you've got now.
No, I'm not saying that. I don't, I would not agree with the top vote getter. I would not agree with that.
Because people will get the mayorship that don't want it necessarily.
Yeah, I would take the rotation.
That's, I think that's worse than we have now to do top vote getter.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's rotation, and if the person doesn't want it because of their life, they can say they don't want it.
It's not as bad, I think we get a-
I, I get your point.
Well, wait, wait, you know, we're, we are still being recorded for television, so we do have to still take turns. Okay, so there's differing opinions on this item. I don't know if any of you asked other people in the community what they thought about it. Some people said, well, what's on the agenda, and what's with the charter, you know, and some people knew there were things we were going to discuss, so I mentioned them. And so they offered their opinions, and most of them seemed comfortable with staying with, you know, what we have, because they like having the consistency of having the same person for four years. And they looked at most of the cities that do it that way, and they felt that most of the cities do it that way, and there was a reason. So, and usually it's because somebody who wants to be mayor runs for that position because they want that added time and responsibility and effort and stuff like that. And sometimes people that are council members don't. They don't even want it for one year. And so that was, you know, what they, what they talked about. And then, I didn't poll people, you know, that kind of thing, because I felt you all should discuss this. It was sort of, you know, like, well, can I even talk about this, because I am mayor, but just looking at the history of other cities and what they've done and what they haven't done, and it seems to have, have worked out for us. And again, I'm not big on changing the charter. I'm sort of less, you know, like, I like history. I don't want to change history. I like history that was there.
The thing is, I mean, imagine you go to talk to someone in Auburn Hills where they've been used to it the opposite, and they may give the exact same reasons for why it's better to rotate the mayor, or the school board, rotate the president.
Actually, yeah, I think they do that.
Again, that's an elected at the organizational meeting.
Well, they don't rotate?
They don't.
It's not a rotation.
They elect all officers at the organizational meeting.
It still rotates, though. I mean, that would be-
Not automatically, no.
That's not true, David.
You have an org-
We have an organizational meeting at which we choose those who will serve, and we've had people who've served double years at certain positions. That was the choice of the body. And we have people who never want to be any of those officers, and that's fine as well. So I've seen it all over. But again, I've also had people ask, I really wanted to vote for president of the school board, the same way as they voted for mayor. I've seen that before, in elections. I looked for a spot to vote and didn't find it. So I think it's, the culture is how they do it. And in Troy, this is how we do it. We have a spot for the mayor, and that's the person who has chosen to put a name in there in order to fulfill the role, which is different than a regular council member.
I'd say it's the culture of the council-mayor relationship, it's not necessarily the council, the culture of the city. It's the culture of our group. It's been historically that way.
It's the culture that's been established in the charter.
And the other thing that, that we need to be realizing is that if, if we're done on a rotation basis, then council members could have three terms, three, four-year terms. They couldn't have three, four-year terms plus two mayoral terms. So it would actually cut back on the, on the time that's available to be on council.
See, I'm, I think that's a good thing, because currently, right now, three terms on council's twelve years, and then you can add eight more years as mayor. I mean, somebody could serve on council for twenty years. What happens is, I mean, this is, this, we all know this, just don't talk about it, you get name recognition. You know, you serve a couple of terms, you get name recognition, pretty soon you just keep getting revoted and revoted for twenty years. And, you know, sometimes it's, it's nice to have new people come up.
The, the other thing-
Twelve years on, on a volunteer's basis in doing this, I think before it was, what, nine?
Nine, six, so fifteen max.
Fifteen, so we're, we're talking about a difference of three years if a person served everything.
But there used to be no limits at all before term limits went in. The other thing is that we should realize is that we have two council members presently serving on council, that if this were to go into effect, would not be able to be mayor.
At all.
At all. They couldn't run for mayor because they'd be off council. They've served their three terms.
Well, that stinks.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's real hard.
Well, if it was Robin, and the other one's not-
And, and I didn't even, I'd quite ask that, Christine, I didn't even think about that when I was talking to-
Can't you, can't you?
No.
So I thought it was all in our face.
And I, and I do want to put in a word for institutional memory.
Well, I understand that-
No, but let me speak.
You do have a lot of good-
Let me speak, Christina.
That's good.
For, for some people, plenty of time is good. Eight years for me on the board, that's plenty of time. However, I very much value the service from the historical perspective of someone who served in addition to twenty years. I think it's the variety and the diversity you have at that table that really enriches our understanding. So whether I was reading public policy with someone who'd been there for decades, it's, it informs what went before. We have lost much of that. We've had really quite a, quite a turnover. So I still think there would be great value in that opportunity for someone to bring in those years. Again, it's up to the people to say, it's not just name recognition, it's what you do when you're sitting in that chair that matters. That's why people are reelected, not just name recognition.
Okay. I, I, I go back to, I'm not sure it's our place to send this there. If after the charter revision committee's watched this, and they decide to discuss it, that's certainly their problem.
Can the charter revision committee bring things forward on their own, which I'll-
I just, I, I, again, I just am, I, I'm not sure it's our place to-
But they, but they should know all the, all the ramifications of it when going into it. And that's why I bring up several things that I brought up, because I wanted everybody to look at all the ramifications before deciding on doing that.
According to the charter, only men are supposed to get compensated in this job, by the way.
It's more than half our councils getting paid that shouldn't.
I can arrange that. Guess what, John? There's four women on council.
Yeah, that's what it's. Well, money's tight, that's why I could arrange.
Okay.
Okay. Anyway, the next one is, which one?
Number four.
Number four.
Number four. There's no consideration process. Oh, this is the one-
There wasn't any, yeah.
That's, that's been going on at charter revision for a long time.
Yeah, we need to, we need to get this settled. This was, this is important.
Yeah.
The last one just showed a language fix, and then it was ready, right?
Right. I think it was because there weren't, there were so few members of the charter revision committee there. Was that what the problem was? There were so few, so it wasn't really-
The subject verb was wrong.
Now it's right.
Subject verb was wrong, and then there was concern about the number of members that were present.
Right. So if they have more members present and the verbiage is right-
That one should go.
That one they should, they'll send afterwards, right?
So the desire is to send this one back to charter revision?
Which one is it?
Because the one came to us, and it wasn't saying what I thought it was supposed to say. Which, which one did we look at?
What sheet are we on here? The red one?
Proposed amendment, April twenty, two thousand nine, correcting subject verb.
Okay, it's the last one on here.
The blue and red one?
Yeah. March fifth?
No, April twenty, two thousand nine.
Maybe we're two thousand two.
It's two thousand seven.
Say it again.
So this one says that they have to resign their office.
No, have a letter ready.
It means that they, they serve out their existing term until the election.
Right.
Because what that does is it notifies the world that that seat will be vacant.
Okay, so if they lose the election, they're out.
Right.
Right.
It's a choice they make.
But they don't have to resign.
Right. Pay a full council.
Yeah, so you keep a whole council, is what.
I thought we were trying to let somebody, well, you're, I know you were for that, but it was about-
Free ride.
Oh, no risk. But, but the desire was, so we, we need, we need to have-
It's probably our best television program ever.
We just need to do a bunch of guys, and it's a lot smoother.
But it's the con, isn't it? So that there's not a special election.
That's why, because you can't-
The burden of special elections is too much.
Well, yeah, if they win, then their seat is open, and so then we have that whole problem with how do we fill that seat.
Yes.
And you fill it with an election, that costs money.
Right, or, or you, or you, or you get the next per, that's the one you and I argued about. Because I said, well, you just take the next person.
And you can write that in instead.
You could, like, you, you can't do that.
You cannot do that.
Okay, so we're saying-
You can't take the third runner-up?
Okay, wait, ladies, let's look, we're going to let the charter revision talk about this one, when, when they have most people here. Because we're on television, I figured we should go, you know, in some severance of order. And then it'll come to us with their final recommendation.
They kind of recommended this already, except for the subject verb. I don't know that this needs to go all the way back. It's come back and forth and back and forth.
You two sit with that committee, what do you think? Does it need to go then one more time or not?
The concern of council was the number of members present in voting on this item.
Right.
Yeah, so it's up to council, how-
And, and I don't, I mean, this is, there are other items that the charter revision committee is going to be considering, so reviewing this with the change, I, I, I don't think that they'll be offended at all.
Okay, all right, that's good. Does that sell that one?
Yeah.
David?
Yes and no.
The one thing, every time I read through this, which we've had several opportunities now, it's so complicated. I mean, it's just incredibly complicated, and there's a lot of cities that don't even mess around with this, and they survive. Is the benefits we're getting out of this clause worth the complexity that it creates?
I, I think that the background material, that the special election now costs a lot of money.
Avoiding the cost, yes. But we could have appointments, like, important.
I'd appoint for a two-year, because it would be two.
Next general election.
For the, it'd be for the rest of the term, wouldn't it?
No, it's not.
It'd be to the next election, okay. Then you'd run for a two-year term or a four-year term, depending.
Well, does this mean, when it says, whose term is not expired, whose term is not expired at the next city council election, who timely files for an office, what are they going to file for, mayor?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, but what if they-
Or the mayor run for council.
Right. I could run for council next time.
Okay, but this is within our body.
It is. It's a sitting member of council.
No, in other words, what if, I was going to do that, was, if they want to run for the state house or on council? house or their own council?
No, this is only in the body.
Well, it doesn't say that, just as timely files for an office.
No, that's true, it doesn't say that.
Because the office would be...
Timely files for a city council position.
Now, councillor, mayor, expiring at the next general city election.
Yeah. There's no city election.
Yeah, only our seats expire at a city election.
So that's why the office is.
Yeah, but this, maybe I would ask Laurie about this, if, who timely files for an office sounds a bit vague to me, it seems like it should say within the...
City office.
A city office. Because an office could be statewide, it could be federal, it could be file for president.
That was, yeah, that was a concern that was raised by the charter revision committee, and there were some members who wanted to have it applying to when you run for any statewide office or...
Well, we're talking about city here, I mean, that's what the discussion is meant.
But there were some members of the charter revision that wanted to expand it to include statewide office running, running for statewide office as well as running for a city office. There were others that, you know, another option that was presented at the charter revision committee was to delete it in its entirety.
Well, I think council has to give them direction, and we've been talking about local city. I mean, they have, you know, they have their box, too, but our direction to them has been, because this is vague, and if it's left that vague, then it's up for interpretation.
But passes.
Apparently this is so.
You were right, because it's odd years.
It's off-year elections.
Well, that, and, I mean, Lauren may be right in that there is some way to interpret this, because it talks about when your term expires at the next city election, absolutely. But Christina's term expires at the next city election, my term expires in 11. If this is read that I want to run for another office, if I want to run for county commissioner in 10, there is an interpretation that would say that I have to put forth an irrevocable letter of resignation to run for county commission or the state house or judge or whatever. I mean, that could be a legitimate interpretation of this.
So it needs to be more specific.
Your term limited anyways, so it wouldn't matter.
Yeah, but...
Shall be effective no later than the general city.
For the first two terms, it would matter.
But it says it's still, the language in there says that shall be effective no later than the general election day.
I just think for what it says...
General city election day.
Yes, general city election day, so that irrevocable letter, because county commission, again, is the off-year.
I know.
So...
You just need to be more specific.
Well, that's the thing we're asking for, because, you know, I think that the charter revision committee, they did change it from what it was previously, and it did say city offices, it was specific to city offices. So that one is the June 30th of 2008, they changed it.
It is a full election. I guess I'm perfectly willing to send this to them and have them, through your research and theirs, assure us that this pertains only to city offices.
Right. Well, I think if I was a voter, I would not interpret that city offices.
Pardon?
There's also state law governing incompatible offices, obviously, you can't be employed in two.
But I just think you ought to make as clear as mud to your voters, so that they know what they're voting for.
But the point is, we'll take it. If somebody runs for this council for a state office, then we've got a vacancy.
It's true.
We have either find success to appoint somebody, or we have to have a special election. And that is required through the charter, particularly when those elections are a year apart, we don't have time to drag our feet. So it's a legitimate concern there.
Yeah, but that's not what we've been talking about.
Right, I know.
What we've been talking about is just if somebody wants to run for mayor, or the mayor wants to run for council, that's what we've been talking about.
Retain a full council.
Right, right, that's been the discussion all along.
Okay, now, is that...
Does that give direction or not?
I guess the referral, then, is there consensus that it's going to be for local only, and that you're going to have them make some recommendations and come back to you? Probably this one that said municipal election would be, I think that would be the wording that we're trying to... So city offices only.
Okay, all right. What's this requirement of the minimum number of charter revision committee members present and voting to recommend items for council? Is that...
Subject will be hired?
Well?
What's the quorum requirement?
Pardon?
What was the quorum requirement from the committee?
The quorum for charter revision?
Well, it's out of members appointed. So if there is a vacancy on the board of three members, and there's only four active members, then the quorum would be three. So it's, that's where the word of members appointed.
Appointed together, yeah.
Yes.
Appointed, not present.
Right, a form of members appointed.
Okay. Does that go to the, on the ballot?
Well, no.
It's just us.
People were concerned that these were going forward.
And that was, I think, something that was brought up, I think, by one member, and I think the reason it's here is because it was brought up, and this is your opportunity, if this is not something that you wanted to proceed with, then we'll just give direction one way or the other.
A member of the charter revision committee?
No, a member of council.
A member of council brought it, okay.
And, going hyperbolic.
Right.
I remember that, and I, and I, too, have some concerns, but again, we have the power to say, you know what, meet again, see if you can get more folks, and call a roll, and we're not just, we're just not real happy with three people sending something to us when it's a committee of seven, you know? And so I don't know that we need this resolution as a policy, because there may be a time when we concur with them, and three members is fine with us.
Well, the only thing is, in having a resolution that is clear to them, and that's what I think we ought to have it clear to them, that if we're going to send this charter amendment referrals to council, it better be two-thirds of the committee. I frankly, I mean, we want an opinion from the large body rather than just a few people.
But if it's two-thirds, what if two people don't like the agenda, and they say, oh, we're gonna derail it, why not show it up? We don't want to give a minority the power of the majority.
Does that happen with us?
I hope not.
I hope not, too.
I hope not.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that it happened at charter revision?
Yeah.
Well, as I recall, isn't, I mean, we've spoken before about absences, haven't we? Because the charter, in fact, addresses those absences, right?
An excuse.
So if there's a pattern of those, I would think, perhaps this would be the time to request it, when it comes time to reappoint, I would request to have that list of absences. If there's a pattern of someone missing, pardon, David?
I think we've had that before. It's not something regular, I can't remember why we've had it.
Yeah, we did, we did ask for...
I think it would inform the...
Is we're going to reappoint someone to a board?
Yeah, it's important information.
Yeah, we did ask for that.
I'd like to see that. So it would inform a decision if there were three meetings of the charter year and someone was missing two of the three meetings, I think that that's a problem.
All our boards.
All our boards.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if there's any other board that we make this, that we're thinking about, the requirement that we're thinking about, that it's the majority of the appointed, a quorum of the appointed members.
Well, there's certain things the planning commission says that has to have...
That needs a supermajority.
Yes, so that's already built in there, that's by state law.
Yeah. A supermajority. Maybe it should be, I do know, I am requesting that, I think it would be important to see attendance on every reappointment. Can that be done?
Do we have any other items for charter revision referrals to talk about?
So this is one that I'm saying, I'm not sure where we are in this, then, we're not joining this out of this, then? Yes, number five.
But you guys decided.
All right.
With the opinion of the members able to attend, we can fix it by reappointments.
Oh, I don't think that, yeah, and I don't think that needs to be in the charter.
No, no, it's direction.
No, no, that's just our, we're just...
It's not the charter.
It's just our...
Someone brought it up.
Potential charter revisions is what this says, and that's fine.
I thought that was kind of...
This is not a charter revision you're suggesting.
It's a referral.
Why did it come on this list, then?
It was requested by a council member to be considered as a potential charter revision, and in my memo, I indicated that...
It can't be.
No, it can be, but it may be too restrictive, and that's why we've recommended a resolution.
Oh, okay.
For the table. That's the question, are we interested in a resolution?
Why don't we have a resolution for the table, and we can vote on it at the table? You don't want to do that?
Oh, I don't have a problem with doing that, but I'm also wondering if you want to require something of the charter revision committee that you are not requiring of your other boards when they recommend this.
Because when the charter revision committee sends it, and we approve, and it goes on the ballot, then it becomes part of the charter, whereas when other committees send us things, it's...
It doesn't become by law.
It's ordinance, well, it does in some cases, or it's a zoning, you know?
Well, I think zoning, I mean, and those are built in, because that does become law, those do become your ordinances, and that's why you have that supermajority. So I don't, I don't know, it's something to think about. Maybe we just spent a week thinking about it.
Well, we don't, not till the sixth.
Yeah, I certainly don't think this needs to be a charter revision.
No, I don't want it to be a charter, I just meant it should be...
Asleep, stop snoring.
I didn't bring it up originally. Okay, any more? Any more? Are we done? We're done until the 22nd at 5:00?
22nd, is that next?
Means I had a need before and a need after.
Oh, I missed what that...
Need bearing.
20 cup?
All right, okay, so we're adjourned, all right?